Good evening. Today is August 5th and it is 5:30 PM and we are having our first work session for the month. And with that, I am going to turn it over to Mr. Brian McCain, Chief of Staff with his report.
Thank you, ma'am. First, I want to say that the Public Police Department invites the public to attend their Navy Neighborhood Safety Night. It's Saturday, August 10th from 10:00 AM to 2:00 PM on Allen Hamill between Main Street and Santa Fe. They'll have music, food, trucks, giveaways, and a dunk tank for family fun. Community partners and local nonprofits will also be in attendance. I take my kids out to that every year. It's a, it's a good time. Some of the stats that I wanted to go over for the past week that I think I'll be giving normal updates on is the Shot Spotter led to an arrest last week on July 28th. Pueblo Police Department responded to the 800 block of East Fourth Street in response to a Shot Spotter call. Two spent 38 caliber shell casings were located in the area. There was video footage of a male arguing with a female, and then the male fired a gun into the air. At approximately 2,100 hours, a caller reported that the male was back in the area. Officers responded, and with the help of the Real-Time Crime Center, they were able to beat the male, who was still in possession of the firearm and booked him on two gun charges. Some of the stats that we see weekly, I want to go over with you with those two. Part one, crime stats to present comparison of January 1st through July 31st of 2023 compared to the same time of January 1st through July 31st of 2024. Arson is down 14%, auto theft is down 19%, burglary 15%, homicide is down 12%, robbery is down 7%, theft larceny is down 5%, and overall down 7%. And that concludes my report.
Okay. Anything from anyone on council? Alrighty, well, I guess we'll get started with our first guest here tonight, Ms. Carla Sykes with the Law Department. And we are going to talk about the, and also our city clerk and talk about the proposed charter amendments.
All right. Good evening, members of council. These are the proposed charter amendments. We have four separate ordinances that are on the agenda. Two are coming up for final reading on this coming Monday. And then two more will be on for first reading this Monday, final reading the end of August. So we wanted to go through those charter amendments with you. These are the four, and this is how they're characterized. The first one has to do with municipal court. The second is a comprehensive modernization, so it kind of goes through the entire charter, pulls some miscellaneous provisions out that need to be updated. And then we have one that deals with elections, one that deals with recall elections. So you should all have copies of the ordinances. I think Ms. Dola provided those for you. Just so you know, it's kind of hard to understand sometimes, but the, the information that's being taken out is enclosed by brackets, and the new language that's being proposed is bolded and underlined, just so you know what you're looking at. It's not moving forward. Did we miss one? Oh, okay. So this is the actual ballot question that has to do with municipal court. This affects two sections in the Charter, Section 3-5 and 5-2. This is a, an amendment to take out the $1,000 cap in our charter. So right now municipal fines are capped at $1,000. This was put in place back in 2008, if I recall correctly. Since then, in 2013, the Colorado Legislature has increased the limit for municipal courts. The maximum fine is currently by statute set at $2,650. But our municipal court has never done anything with that because it was required as a charter amendment. This would take out that cap in the charter and allow it to be set by ordinance. And so that allows for more flexibility going forward. Council can still choose to set the cap at $1,000 if you want to, but you would set it by ordinance. Or you can set the cap at the statutory cap, which would be the $2,650. Also allows you to change that should the state amend that to a higher number. Then council can amend that as they see fit going forward. The other part of this I think that we So that's the only thing that has changed is that $1,000 amount. So that's the only thing on that ballot question is a standalone ballot question. The next ballot question we have is this one. This is the modernization that talks about modernization of miscellaneous provisions within the code. And so we're going to walk you through each of those one at a time because this one's pretty dense. Two sections of the code deal with emergency ordinances at Section 1-5 and Section 3-20. We have proposed language to be amended that would allow an emergency ordinance for prevention of significant financial loss to the city. And that would encompass things like grant agreements. For instance, there's a lot of grant agreements that move quickly and we don't have time really to get them on as ordinances because of the timeframe it requires us to do that. There's also instances where there's financing terms that may be favorable that we may want to get on as an emergency ordinance to be ratified at a later date. There are still certain things as part of the charter that can only be approved through ordinance. Compensation, the budget, there's specific items that is not going to change. The emergency ordinance will not change that. And so they could be done as emergency ordinances if we needed to and then ratified at a later date. I did add language in here just to let everybody know that you would not be able to create a tax or a fee by emergency ordinance.
So this section is clarification in regards to a couple situations that we found ourselves in a few months ago. First, with Mayor Graham's resignation from her council seat to take her position as mayor, and then again with the resignation of Councilor Hernandez. The charter does not declare a clear way to declare vacancy and to begin filling the position quickly in those two particular situations. So this amendment basically clears that up and allows council to take action more quickly to fill an open seat with an appointment. So this section specifically ends the newspaper publishing requirement as the city no longer has a paper that is printed and published daily in the city of Pueblo as is required in the language of our charter. So legal notices would instead be able to be published free of charge on the city's website. This particular change would save my office approximately $20,000 a year, possibly more because of the purchasing and planning departments that also have to publish in the newspaper. So, but we believe that this would be a significant savings to the city to allow us to have our legal notices on the city website, especially since there's no longer a body that fits the requirements of this legal notice. And this is also going to be the same topic for Section 319 coming up in a minute. Just clarifying that in another section that mentions the newspaper publishing.
This is Section 3-9 talks about the power to make contracts. So when the city went to the mayoral form of government, a language was added in here that required that all contracts be approved by ordinance. Prior to that, it just simply said the council may enter into contracts and leases on behalf of the municipal government. And we are proposing that it goes back to that. My understanding was that the reason that the language was added was so that the, the mayor could have veto power and review all contracts before they went on the agenda. In essence, the council doesn't introduce a lot of contracts. Typically, it's an administrative function, so it's the mayor that's introducing them, not council. So that the reason for putting it in there in the first place doesn't seem to be applicable. And in this case, like I said, there are certain things that have to be approved by ordinance, like intergovernmental agreements, franchise agreements, leases, borrowing money, design bills, construction contracts. All of those things are specifically called out in the charter and have to be approved by ordinance. Other contracts do not, aren't specifically called out, so they would be, potentially be able to be approved by resolution, which would cut down on some time for council and help the city. There are some contracts that city departments want to enter into that do not require the exchange of any money. For instance, the mayor's office had a contract for a promotional video that they wanted to enter into. There was no exchange of money. They were going to do it for free. There are some contracts that purchasing already enters into by our purchasing guidelines. So this would just streamline things for staff and for the departments and for council so that all contracts would not have to be approved by ordinance. And then if councils wanted to, they could set parameters for what you wanted to see as far as contracts, either the monetary amount or some other provision, if you felt you needed to do that beyond what is already earmarked in the charter. This is the form of ordinances. In the ordinances, when we bring changes, as I said, the things, the language that's being taken out is enclosed by brackets. That can also, also frequently become confusing. And so what we're proposing is to use the strikeout. So it would be aligned, aligned through the language instead of using brackets. And I think that's going to more clearly identify what language is being taken out. And then you will still be using the bolded and underlined for new language. That's just to clean up and a modernization feature. Because when we had this originally, the typewriters, the strikeout wasn't as easy to do as it is with a computer at this point.
So this is again, that section referenced earlier with the newspaper publishing, it takes out in a newspaper of the city.
This again talks about the emergency ordinances that I talked about previously. It's just another section that addresses emergency ordinance in our charter.
So this section is another great example of a modernization. The last sentence is what's being removed in this particular section, which references a, an index book which is kept. And this is before the ability to do digital searches. So essentially, we just basically have a book that is the title of every single ordinance because that was the easiest way to search through all the ordinances when you had no ability to look at them aside from just looking at the titles of the ordinance. So we've really replaced the need for, for this book. And so it would save some staff time to not have to keep it.
This is Section 6-1, talks about the city attorney. Recently, council passed an ordinance that required, that removed the residency requirement for directors, so that it's no longer in the city, it's within the county. The city attorney is currently the only city employee that is required by charter to live within the city. So this would take out that requirement. The city attorney would still be bound by the ordinance that city passed as far as other, all department directors, but it would no longer be a requirement of the charter. And this would allow the city to have more flexibility when hiring city attorneys in the future. This is Section 7-28. It deals with purchases. Currently, our purchasing department keeps, essentially, it's like an inventory of all equipment that we have or we own as a city in excess of $50. This is a dated provision, and as you can imagine, there are probably less things that we own that are under $50 than over $50. And so it has become time-consuming and burdensome for purchasing to keep that. So we're asking to take out the monetary amount and let that amount be set by council, by ordinance, whatever amount you feel is appropriate. And purchasing can come and present what amount they think would be appropriate. If this gets passed, then there's going to be a lot of ordinances, obviously, that have to follow up with the charter amendment, so council can set those parameters. But this allows it to be more flexibility, more flexible as time goes on. This is Section 8-12. It's a compulsory retirement, and we are proposing to take this entire provision out. This requires retirement at 60 years old for police and fire, 65 for all other city employees. This provision really is obsolete and likely contrary to federal law at this point based upon age discrimination. And so we're proposing that it just be taken out. Anything that has to do with employment matters, council can address by ordinance if they feel they need to. This is another modernization. This deals with the amount that the water districts and Board of Waterworks can contract or expend at any given time. And again, we're just proposing that the amount be taken out and that amount then be able to be set by ordinance, by council, so that that amount is flexible over time. And when that comes about, if it does pass, then we'll bring forward an ordinance for council after considering it with the water districts and Board of Waterworks as to what amount they think would be reasonable.
So this charter amendment is now, this is now the third one that we're looking at, and it deals mostly with the timeline issues related to the mayoral runoff. I'll go over each of them, but they're strictly based on difficulties that we encountered in running this past January election. And I just want to be clear that these suggestions came directly from my office. If you wouldn't mind going to the first one for me. Sorry.
There you go. Thank you.
So in Sections 4-2 and also in 17-2, which we'll see later, these changes are being made for allowances required by the necessity of a runoff election. So it legally cannot be held in the current charter allotted timeframe. So the second Tuesday in January came and went before we were able to have our election. So this would add language to allow it to be a little more flexible and to allow the, the mayor to stay on until they are, have their successor duly elected and qualified. So this section, again, it takes off, out, the special runoff election shall be held on the first Tuesday in the month following. So that would have specifically been December, the first Tuesday in December. And that's just frankly impossible to actually accomplish because at minimum, you're supposed to be sending out overseas voter registration, voter forms, ballots 45 days in advance to allow those to come back. So you, you simply can't have this kind of turnaround period, especially with an election that's being held by the county, which has a longer timeframe to ratify the actual results of the November election on top of that. So this section specifically allows some flexibility in timelines. This is something that came up this year because they are looking at the state level and potentially having some changes to these timelines. And if we have ours set in charter where we're not able to change with the state, there's a possibility that it would not allow us to coordinate with the county and that we would have to have our own standalone election. So the big people in the city would essentially be getting two ballots on Election Day, which would be very costly for the city and also very duplicative and confusing as well. So we're stressing that we put it within timeframes set in the code so that we would be able to change those timeframes if the state does decide to change their timelines so that we would be able to then change ours to get the information to the county as required.
I was, I was reading this acceptance of nomination, and it's confusing. It says, "If a petition is found to be signed by more persons than the number legally permitted, the last signatures in excess of that number should be disregarded, even if some of the earlier signatures are void." So you could have 100 signatures with 10 of them being void, 90, not meet the threshold, but you can't use another 50 that you may have collected.
I don't believe that's correct. I mean, that's, that's not anything, that's not anything that we're looking at changing. So the, the, the maximum that you're required is you're allowed to get 100, but you can get up to 200. So if you did get up to 200, that, those are the ones that would then be discarded, would be the 200 is my understanding of that. But that, but that's not something that's, that we're looking at debating or changing. Yeah, that, this is currently the way it reads. The only thing that we're looking at changing is the, the parts that are in the brackets, and then we're, we would be adding the underlined and bolded section.
If that's the way it reads, it doesn't, still doesn't read.
So that, that I, on its face, that's the way it reads. I know we defer to state statute if there's any ambiguity in our own charter. So I'm not, can't speak right now as to what the state statute says and how that reads between numbers, if you have 100 to 200, and how that would read. I, we can look into that and get back to you, but that is not anything that's proposed. We wouldn't be proposing any change to that right now. Yeah.
So, and also to be clear, this is, this is talking about the number of signatures that are certified by the circulator. So that, that implies that additional signatures were added after, after the circulator said that those signatures were gathered properly, and so those are the signatures that were not, would not be counted. So if you had a sheet of 50, you had 25 signatures, and then the, the person gathering the signatures certified that they had 25 signatures, and then there were actually 27, those last two would not be counted. So this is another kind of modernization update. Specifically, they say that in the charter, it, it references that voting machines are the preferred method. And these days, mail, mail ballot elections are the preferred method. It would be very, very expensive to hold a, a voting machine measure where we'd have to have voting machines at every precinct in a city these days. And so we are trying to change the mail ballot in and update the language to reflect that, but also allow some flexibility by allowing an alternate method to be established by ordinance so that we don't have this problem again in future years. Should mail balloting no longer be the preferred method and there's a different preferred method, it would then be able to be changed by city council, by ordinance, rather than by having to have a whole charter amendment put through. So this takes out pretty much this entire section, and it's the same as going to be for the next section because it's the voter registration requirement, and that is handled purely by the county these days. It, this is one of the things that was useful back before we had digital registration. We still are able to allow people to register at my office with, by the use of our computer that we have there. We have a kiosk where people can sign up to vote in the city clerk's office. But the only people that actually accept it, and even during the mayoral runoff, the county still didn't want us to be accepting hand-in-voter registration, just registering through the kiosk. So this basically updates to account for that. And then the next one does the same. It's another reference to the voter registration that would be removed. So the state recently changed the expenditure dates. Our current code is, the current code is actually stricter than the charter timeline requirement. So we would like to change that to be what is set by ordinance, and then what is set by ordinance would be what everyone would continue to follow. And if there were any changes and the council wanted to follow what is in state statute, we would be able to do that instead. Okay, this is the final charter amendment that we're going to go over, and this is around the recall. Again, the intention of this article is, is to make it easier to place a recall election for an elected official on a November ballot that's hosted by the county clerk. So during a time, or, or to place an election during a timeline that would allow for the county to run the election rather than the more expensive way for a city to run the election. We've been fortunate in the number of years that the county has been able to hold all of our elections for us, coordinated or not. But as we saw in January, that's not always the case despite the county's willingness and their best efforts. So this charter amendment would stretch the timeline to allow us to more strategically place these types of elections, either on the ballot of an election that's already going to occur, or to have a wider stretch of options when to have the election, to better coordinate with the county. Again, our last election cost about double what it cost the county to run our elections, and that isn't even taking into account all the staff time from the clerk's office, the time tying up the community room for the police department, the renovation work from the Public Works Department, the setup work for the IT department, the contracts put together by the purchasing department. It all takes time and effort, and if we can save the city money for these types of unaccountable costs, then we'd like, at least like to try. So this first section changes the timeline for review for the city clerk's office. The current code is stricter than the charter timeline, which, which we could keep too as well. For the filing of the petition, we would like to change that to 60 days, which would allow additional time to, because, because the, the count of when the election has to be held is based upon the date that the city clerk would declare the results. So this would allow the city clerk a, a little timeline to, when to declare the results, and then when we go to the next one, it gives the additional dates on which to hold the election. So, go ahead. So basically, this gives an additional 30 days on the current timeline. Council would still have the ability to fix the date for the recall election as early as possible, but it provides for additional time that could be needed by my office. And again, like this amendment is potentially what can save the city an estimated $100,000 in taxpayer revenue by allowing the council to combine the recall election with the coordinated election if one is going to be held within 180 days.
And that's consistent, that 180 days is consistent with state statute too.
And then this again ensures that we can meet the turnaround times to get names on the ballot. Previously, that we were kind of confused by the language, honestly, I think that was in there now. But it allows us to set timeframes so that if there is a recall election, we can get the names of the people that would potentially replace that recalled official in a timely manner that would then allow us to place those names on the ballot so that it would be done in one foul swoop. People would vote on, one, would you like to recall this individual? And then two, who would you like to replace this individual if they are recalled? That is it for the charter amendments. We're happy to answer any questions that council may have.
Questions from council?
Yes.
President Aliff.
Thank you. I don't understand on the, so I get the, the need for the 120, 180 days. But say that the recall is successful, then you got to have a vote anyway, right? Within how long?
So, so the point of
So, so the point of part of these is actually to allow those to be on the same ballot. So you would vote once, so, so the ballot would basically have two questions on it. One would be, would you like to recall this officer? And the second question would be who you would like, who would you like to replace this officer should they be recalled? The questions are not dependent upon one of, one, one another. You can vote, no, I don't want to recall this officer and then still vote for who you would like to replace them should they be recalled. Um, but it would allow us to place them on the same ballot and, and get it done on the same one.
The other questions I have are on the first one. And I wrote down a couple of things that I just questioned. So the power to make contracts, so section three nine. So right now they're by ordinance only. You said that they would be done by resolution, but it doesn't say that.
So that's because not all contracts can be done by resolution. So throughout the rest of the charter, there are specific contracts that have to be done by ordinance. This just simply takes it back to what it was prior to the mayor form of government. So it just says that council can enter into contracts and how you do that is either by ordinance or by resolution. It would depend on the type of contract, whether it would be by ordinance or resolution. And that can, um, so it doesn't have to be anything that is in charter. So right now we have a handful that have to go by ordinance such as, uh, intergovernmental agreements, financing things, the budget, things like that, but simple contracts, um, for a private grant that is not an intergovernmental agreement, that's, you know, fifteen hundred dollars, five thousand dollars could be done by resolution then instead of by ordinance. Um, or if there's a contract that doesn't have any exchange of any money, um, then that could be done by resolution. Um, so it would depend on the type of contract.
But that's written somewhere?
That, it would not be written. It would be, um, by absence of that would be say, cause anything, council has to either act by ordinance, resolution or motion. So if it's not required to be done by ordinance, then it is presumed to be able to be done by resolution.
Got it. Then I went to three nineteen. And I, and this pertains to several of the, uh, sections where we're, we're moving to take the, to, to post them in the newspaper. And then my concern would be, what about the people that that's the only place where they get their information? What do you expect them to do?
So I think the movement is to do things online. I'm not sure if the clerk would still have one posted here at city hall.
Yes, we would still have it posted on the bulletin board in city hall as is required of all, um, public postings. So they would be able to access it there. Um, and I mean, as far as getting online these days, even if they don't have their own computer at home, there's a variety of options. Obviously, we do have a kiosk in the city clerk's office as well. Um, they are, there's obviously libraries, the library these days even has, um, laptop rentals and hotspot rentals. So that they can have this in their own homes.
I understand that. But I think that our, our intent should be that we make government as accessible as possible to everybody in the community. There, I don't think that you have, or maybe you have and maybe I'm all wet here. Have you done a study of how many people are on the internet and as opposed to how many people get their information on the newspaper?
As far as information goes, uh, I mean, there's still, uh, I, I mean, it, you, you can compare the, uh, city's Facebook page to the circulation numbers for the chieftain. And I think that you'll see that there's a lot more people and engagement on the city's Facebook page.
How many?
So if the circulation is, uh, under five thousand and, you know, that's one post on the police department's Facebook page.
The chieftain circulation is five thousand?
Is under five thousand.
It's under five thousand? I just still think it's restrictive to people's access to government information. But they get a vote on, they get a vote on it. It's not me.
Yeah, well, I mean, but, but part of us bringing this forward to council is that we do want council to be able to, to tell us what you think and what your concerns are. We're kind of at the point now where, um, if we want to get these on the ballot, we need to have them in the way that we want them. So, uh, now is the time for discussion if there's a, a large concern so that.
I'll just say my dissent over faking the chieftain out of the process. That's all I'm saying there. Then disposition of ordinances. And this was specifically because I didn't understand if, that there's a book of ordinances. And we want to get out, rid of the book of ordinance, stop the book of ordinances and put it online.
No, there's a binder, uh, so there's a binder, my office that, um, is my staff copying and pasting the title of every ordinance into a word document that we print out that has never been referenced in the time that I've been city clerk. Um, but that we do every year, every meeting. Um, so that if it was, because it's required in the charter.
So essentially an index.
It's essentially.
It's only an index of titles and it's a paper index of titles so that you could go through and, and flip through and find them. Um, but it's not an efficient way to search and we have capabilities to search it online at this point and electronically. And, and people do have.
Does the public have access to that?
Yes, the, well, the public has access to the digital search tour, um, tools. So they can go on to the city clerk's webpage and look at historical resolution or, and ordinances, which is not actually historical, but is completely up to date.
Webpage?
The city clerk webpage.
City clerk?
Yes, on the city website.
And what button do you push?
It's called historical resolutions and ordinances. It's in the menu on the left-hand side. And it goes to a digital search of everything that we have digitized. So this, this would just mean that we wouldn't continue to create this. It doesn't mean that we would get rid of the current index that we do have.
And I'm assuming people have, um, access to that digitally on your kiosk as well?
Yes, indeed. Thank you.
But the whole, I just say it one more time. The whole purpose for people to access information is that they can do it easily. So online is easy. I, I like that. But some people do, don't have access to it online and some people don't and are still very active in wanting to know about gov, their government and what's coming forward. That's all I'm saying. And, and they don't necessarily want to run down to the library or come down here to the kiosk when they get the newspaper every day.
Sure, I understand that about.
That's all I'm saying.
Oh, I understand that about the, the newspaper. As far as the index, they would have to come down here to access the in, index anyway. That's why I asked about the kiosk.
Not now.
And it also, they would have to.
I bet you said you could do it online.
Oh, you can online, but if you, if they wanted to access the paper version, they would still have to come down.
Okay, that's all.
And, and this also doesn't mean that council can't set an ordinance requiring us to continue to, to do it. But the way that it's currently set, I honestly don't think that it could be enforceable because we don't have a newspaper that's published daily in the city of Pueblo.
Well, every day but one.
Well, and you can, with, with, with that, you can even argue that it's published because they publish it online. But this says that it has to be printed in the city of Pueblo and it's clearly not printed in Pueblo anymore. They print it up in Denver these days.
Oh, but I still get it in my newspaper.
Yes, in your mailbox.
Yes, Councilor Flores.
Uh, I, I might kind of agree with President Aliff. I thought I heard you say that we no longer have, did you make the statement, we no longer have a printed newspaper? I thought I heard you say that.
So the, the requirement for the, the meeting, the circulation is that it needs to be, I'm not sure if I have the exact quote for the newspaper one, but it, it essentially needs to be a newspaper that is published and printed daily in the city of Pueblo. And so the chieftain does not match those.
But is, isn't that really just semantics? I mean, it's printed six times a, a week. Uh, and we don't get a Friday, um, uh, or is it Saturday, Saturday we don't get a newspaper?
And it's not published within the city of Pueblo. It's published in Denver. It's printed. It's print, not printed in the city of Pueblo. It's printed in Denver.
Right, but, but, but the effect that we're trying to get here is that we want to notify the citizens of Pueblo, Colorado that, um, they should be aware that we are going to be moving on these ordinances uh, at our next meeting. I mean, the whole purpose is to give the citizens notice of what we're doing and that they have a right, you know, to object to it or, or affirm, uh, what we're doing. And we do have, are, are we current, we're currently putting up not only in the printed newspaper, but also the digital newspaper.
So it, it goes in the digital edition because the digital edition looks the same as the printed paper, um, in that way. But the majority of people do not access the digital edition. They, they read the, the individual articles on those, the website of the paper rather than going to look at what the newspaper actually, the printed paper actually looks like.
Right, and, uh, it, it seemed to me that you put a lot of emphasis in saving twenty thousand dollars too, that it's gonna save us twenty thousand dollars. And I'm not sure, you know, that, 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 that it's worth not, not having as much information to the citizens and giving them notice. And the argument that we're gonna save twenty thousand dollars doesn't hold much water with me.
So I want to make two points, um, to that. The first being that this takes this requirement out of the charter. It doesn't mean that we need to stop doing it. So it, 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 it stops us from being held to it in the charter and it allows council to make the decision and to potentially act for the times, like depending on what technology brings in the future and make it a lot easier for council to change that in the future should, you know, the chieftain, you know, go out of business or if it continues, uh, its decline and isn't able to continue to publish as frequently. Um, if it, you know, changes down to a weekly, these are all changes that I have seen happen to hub-based newspapers in California. And, uh, you know, it, it's, it's very possible, um, that that could happen. Uh, it's also possible that it'll ramp back up, you know, i- i- if, if that's money that the council wants to spend, then, then the council can continue to spend even if this, um, amendment is passed. It just gives the council flexibility to not potentially spend on that. But when the chieftain, um, uh, when, when you look at the, the cost per eyes, right? So you're looking at how much it costs you to put this newspaper notice in versus how much it would cost us to put it on the website and the number of eyes that you're getting for both those. The amount that it would cost to continue to put it in the paper for these, that, these expenses that just kind of continue to grow because the newspaper is in decline. And so ad revenue is one of the only things that they can still have there because of these types of requirements.
I'm not sure I know what, what the circulation is on the digital and the written print. I mean, is that information that's somewhere out there? I mean.
We have, excuse me, I'm sorry. We have two people here.
At one time, the circulation was like sixty-four thousand. It was significant.
Yes.
And I, it's hard to believe that it would be down to, I think you said five thousand.
That's my understanding.
That's hard to believe. I mean, I, the other thing is that I get, I get the written newspaper now by mail. And, uh, I, I look at those ordinances sometimes, uh, before I've seen them on the, on the deal. And they're in, there's, sometimes they're hard to read because the print is so small, but, uh, I'm not sure. I, I like the idea of not putting this in the newspaper like we always have and on both the digital and, and the print.
But just, just remember, like she said, just because we take it out of the charter, doesn't mean that council can't require it by ordinance. It just allows you more flexibility. Um, and as times change, council may want to require that it's both in print and online. Um, and you could do that by ordinance.
And I'll guarantee you, uh, the, the owner of the public chieftain right now has about a hundred and fifty-five newspapers. And the, the reason that they're doing this en masse is they save a lot of money by having probably, I think probably have maybe twenty cities that do the printing. And, uh, it's just, you know, it's just one of those business, uh, thing, decisions that are made to save money. And, uh, even though it's printed in Denver, I don't understand why that has anything to do with it. Uh, that it's printed in Denver, uh, or Springs or wherever and somehow, uh, it's still doing the job of notifying the citizens of Pueblo that, uh, that these things are gonna be coming before city council. I don't want to beat a dead horse there, but.
But the goal with the modernization ordinance really is to provide more flexibility to city council. So it isn't, doesn't mean that anything that we've changed in there is not something that city council can't do. But the goal is to allow you more flexibility to do it by ordinance rather than have it as a requirement of charter so that city council is better able to change with the times, not just on this issue, but on most of those issues. Um, anyone else? Uh, Mr. Latino.
I just want to say that basically we have a population base of older people. They don't, they don't, they don't, they're not on the computer, okay? They're not on the computer. So they depend on, on, uh, the Pueblo Chieftain, which is now printed in Denver, which the circulation is, I don't know what the circulation is. And then you can get it online. Again, they, they're, they're, they're not online. They don't, they don't mess with computers. So, I don't know.
So what I'm hearing is, is that if this passes, we will have an ordinance ready to go to continue our publication by newspaper. After that, and we can have that ready for you. And tha- that's really what you're, every, or everything that you're bringing here forward is about giving flexibility to make changes for the sign of the times. And we can choose to get rid of that newspaper or we could choose not to. Um, so it's, these are not set in stone, simply said. Um, and it just allows us for flexibility in the future.
Correct.
All of them, right?
Correct.
Okay, great. Uh, Councilor Gomez.
I guess I'm concerned about some of the things we, we don't see. Uh, I can go to any store here, pick up a Denver Post, find out what's going on there, but I'm really concerned that we're kind of turning into the Dr. Murrow Information Island where nobody knows about what's going on in Pueblo and Springs and Denver. You can't even, can't pick up a paper. Can't find out what's going on. They're not gonna get the mailed in version unless that's be unusual if they did. But that's my concern. If we went down from what, sixty thousand to five thousand, this paper's gonna disappear. It's not gonna be mailed soon. It's gonna be all digital. And I'm concerned about the lack of information that people who don't have computers, who don't have access to it, don't know how to do it, are never gonna get the information they need to find out what the heck's going on in their own city. That's my concern. Now, we may think that that's just kind of fluff, but it's not. I have a brother that lives in Denver. He says, I don't know what's going on in Denver. I mean, excuse me, in Pueblo, I have no clue. You used to be able to pick up the paper once in a while and find out what the heck was going on. We can't do that anymore. We are losing contact with the outside world, if you ask me. For what it's worth.
If I may, if I may comment on that, um, your, your brother in Denver would be able to go on the city's website free of charge and look at all of the ordinances where he would not be able to go free of charge onto the, the Pueblo Chieftain's website and see the legals in, in the digital printed edition.
I can promise my brothers that the only person who lives in Denver that would like to have access. There are people, I'm just saying, when I'm going out, I'm in another part of, uh, the, the state. I check up on their paper. I check on our paper. How's it doing there? How's, those kind of things. We, they don't know who Pueblo is and I'm concerned we're getting lost.
And, and to be clear, we can still do both too. Like we can put the, the printed editions, um, online without having to stop trying, doing the newspaper printing because again, it is going to be free for the city. So it doesn't need to be one or the other if that's what council desires.
Yeah, cuz you're, I'm sorry.
No, you're good.
Um, you're correct. Uh, even as a citizen of Pueblo, you can't get information off the chieftain unless you, um, are a subscriber. You can't look it up that way. So, um, all right, anyone else? All right, ladies. Thank you very much. And we are gonna move into our next topic and that is, uh, with the proposed lodging ordinance. And that will include them, this discussion will include the mayor, um, Carla Sykes, our attorney, Chief Knoller, um, Captain Dan Anderson. Um, and we're looking at a presentation for that. So welcome again.
And I have copies of the ordinance for all of you. I don't think you got copies. Let me go ahead and get that. So we've been working on this ordinance for quite some time since I was first sworn into office. Um, this has to, this is incorporated by a lot of the issues that we have seen with the roadway um, and the value stay and what our licensing looks like for lodging facilities. and the value stay and what our licensing looks like for lodging facilities. And how we can have more control over what's going on in these lodging facilities to make sure these people are being properly inspected. Their inspections are happening every year. They're maintaining a safe environment for people to stay. There's no criminal activity around the area. So this is a a combination of, you'll hear from the law department. The sales tax department is also here tonight if there's any questions to be answered because they are the ones that issue the business licensing. And the police department is also here to talk about their part and what we've added into the lodging ordinance for the facilities who aren't maintaining a good business license and good practices and procedures in the city of Pueblo. So this really is more of a tool for the city to use in addressing some of the issues that we've been seeing in the last several months.
Okay, so this would be a kind of an overview of the issues that we have seen with the city of Pueblo. With some of our lodging places that we've had issues with, which would be the roadway and the value stay. Despite the attentions that we've given both of these facilities, most of these facilities have deplorable living conditions. When you walk in, they've still passed their inspections, which they go through a yearly inspection with the health department, fire inspections and regional building. The two cases that we have worked on here recently are gonna be the roadway in, which is what we'll talk about first. And you'll see we have four hundred and sixty calls for service from January one, twenty twenty-three to January twenty-seven of twenty twenty-four. And this is just, that does not, will not equal that four hundred and sixty. These are some of the calls that we've dealt with. Hundred and forty-seven community-oriented policing calls. That's where officers put themselves out. And they will go address any type of crime issue that they are aware of up in that area. We've had sixty-two suspicious vehicle calls, twenty recovered stolen motor vehicles, twenty abandoned nine-one-one calls, twelve narcotics violations and a homicide. These are some of the photos that you'll see, living conditions that were within this facility. I think all total, there are probably four hundred, five hundred photos that we did take when we were up there. This happened in February of this year. And what you're not seeing are some of the living conditions with the bedbugs, the plumbing, the issues that they had constantly in that facility. If we look at the calls for service from February one through July of twenty twenty-ninth, and this is just this year, you can see the calls for service February were three hundred and ninety-eight in twenty twenty-three. This year was four hundred and forty-five. And after we closed them down, you can see that the calls for service are starting to decline. So in July, we are currently at three hundred and four, whereas last year we were at five hundred and nineteen.
I'd like to point out that this is not just calls at the roadway. This is in the area outlined above, Fortino, south one block to Highway fifty, one block south of Highway fifty, all the way over to northern, or excuse me, North Elizabeth Outlook. So if you take one block north and south of Highway fifty from North Elizabeth to Outlook, that that's the impact on the reduction in calls based on the closure of that hotel.
And when you look at the calls for service on roadway versus value stay, the decline for the value stay is gonna be greater than what you're gonna see at the roadway. A lot of that has to do with there's all the hotels that are up on the Highway fifty corridor. There's a heavier population in that area. So we look at value stay, we have one thousand six hundred and twenty-six calls for service from January one, twenty twenty-three to March thirty-first of twenty twenty-four. Three hundred and sixteen of those calls were community-oriented policing. Ninety were disturbance calls. We had fifty-six warrant arrests, forty-three narcotics violations, twenty-eight stolen vehicles were recovered, twenty-two shots fired, nineteen motor vehicle thefts, sixteen calls for man with a weapon, twelve overdose, nine assaults, two dead body calls. On those calls, those were overdose calls, one shooting and one homicide. And these are the photos from the value stay. And these are living conditions where most of these folks, and we found out at the value stay that some of these individuals who were staying are being charged upwards of fifteen hundred dollars a month to live like this. And this is our stats that we pulled from April twenty-fifth to July twenty-ninth. You can see in April where our call volume was. And as you go down to July, we are now at a hundred and eighty for that area and that area stretches all the way up to Constitution, which covers the Big R complex. Hunter Drive, which covers the skate city, the restaurants in there, and then it goes back to Eighteenth and Erie and then covers that area. And you can see the decline.
A couple of things that I would like to point out too is we we got a handout for you that includes the SEP TED review process that would occur for new hotels, which is one form. And then the other one is for hotels that are trying to reopen after being closed or their license had expired and they need to get a new license. They didn't renew it before their license has expired. The primary difference between those two from the law enforcement aspect is that it includes an analysis of the crime that is occurring at that hotel. And I think City Attorney Sykes is going to expand on that that process as she goes through her presentation. The last thing I wanted to kind of key on from the law enforcement perspective is those community-oriented policing calls that take place at these hotels. Many of those calls at these two hotels in particular led to criminal discovery of criminal activity, whether that be the recovery of a stolen vehicle, seizure of weapons, seizure of guns, arrests for warrants. So it's not just us going up there, driving in the area and then leaving. It's officers going up there with a specific purpose of investigating whether criminal activity is happening. And also making, making arrests, making, you know, reports or seizing illegal items, whether those are stolen vehicles, drugs, guns, money, in in those types of things that are occurring up in those areas.
So based upon some of the things that happened at the value stay and the roadway and some of the other issues that we discovered through that process on those hotels, other hotels in the city, I was asked to modify our license. So originally, we were looking at just modifying lodging licenses so that it only dealt with hotels. What we were looking at doing is addressing that through tighter regulation, tighter oversight.
So as we were doing that, a lot of the processes that were involved with that, the appeal rights and some of the application requirements seem to apply to all licenses, not just lodging licenses. So we, you'll see here, I'm gonna talk first about the lodging license and what changes that we're proposing to that. But then after that, we're gonna go back to the general chapter, chapter one of Title Nine, that talks about licenses in general and those general processes. And then I'll kind of go over some of the significant changes that are being proposed to that section that would apply to all licenses, all business licenses, not just lodging facilities. So for lodging facilities, we started first by gathering more information. So the more information we have, the more opportunity we have to hold people accountable, to get information and to have contacts. So they're gonna be required through this new process now that they have to disclose the principles of their of their company, so we know who's involved. They're gonna be required to disclose if they're operating a lodging facility in any other jurisdiction and identify that jurisdiction. They're going to have to disclose whether or not they've ever had a license revoked, suspended or denied. And whether or not the lodging facility, if they may have in another jurisdiction, has ever been declared a nuisance. And by having them disclose that information, then the finance department is going to be able to better vet the applicants that come through and identify any potential issues that may be coming up. This doesn't mean that they're automatically prohibited from having a lodging license here. It's just gonna provide us with more information. So the other thing that we wanted to do was to provide tighter regulations. So currently, before a lodging facility can be licensed or renewed on their annual license, they have to be inspected by the building department, the fire department and the health department. So from this process, we have added now the police department to these annual inspections. So police are gonna review the calls for service to the hotel. Lodging facilities with a call for service of ratio of one point eight-nine or more for that previous year will have to meet with the police department and come up with a plan on how they're going to address that before their license will be granted. So calls for service means the number of calls for service divided by the number of rooms in service at the lodging facility. So that's how it's defined. The call for service ratio to be a concern has to be at one point eight-nine or greater. And then the requirement is that they have to meet with the police department to come up with a mitigation plan. If they fail to meet with the police department or fail to develop a plan, then that could result in revocation, suspension or denial of the license. They can go ahead and be granted a license, even if their call for service is at that one point eight-nine or greater, as long as they have a mitigation plan in place. So as long as they're gonna be making efforts to reduce that call, those calls for service, they can still be granted a license. But if that is not mitigated, if those calls for service are not reduced within six months, then the licensing department or the finance department as a licensing officer can go in and and take a look at that and it could lead to a possible suspension or revocation at that time. So what does the goal is, is to hold the management responsible for the conduct at their hotels, which is one of the things we discovered in going through the roadway and the value stay is that they weren't being held accountable. And so one of the requirements under the lodging license is now that these organizations, these companies are gonna have to identify and register their managers. So it doesn't have to be just one manager. It can be multiple managers. But whoever they register as a manager, they have to have a manager onsite twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week. That person has to be accountable. They have to be responsible for the operation of the hotel. And they have to have some sort of decision-making capability and they have to be able to get in in contact with the owners if that's necessitated. If those managers change, then that has to be reported back to the finance department or the licensing officer so the records for the city can be amended. But the manager's gonna be required to maintain a register book. So a register book is either electronic or paper format, has to be a register of all the guests that are checking in and checking out of the hotel. And that, we had some issues with that with the roadway and the value stay. So that was a current requirement. It's still a requirement. That isn't anything new. But the manager being the responsible party, someone to hold accountable for that, that is what's new in this ordinance. We also had an issue with people staying over thirty days. Some of these rooms from the value stay and roadway had been rented for years. And so now management is going to be responsible for making sure that no one is staying in that hotel for longer than thirty consecutive days unless it has gone through the required inspections with regional building and has been designated as a long-term hotel. So as you know, we have some extended stay hotels in town and they have different requirements that they have to meet through regional buildings. So as long as they are designated as an extended stay or a long-term hotel, then they would be okay to have a certain portion of their rooms be extended stay. But it's gonna be the manager who's onsite that's gonna be responsible for ensuring that that happens. We also have a requirement now that there will be no partial opening allowed. So for instance, with the value stay and the roadway, there were some questions about whether or not they could rehabilitate portions of their building and allow that to open while they were working on the rest of the building. Under these ordinances, that will not be allowed to happen. And the primary reason for that is, is that, for instance, I think it was the was it the value, the roadway, one of them has a building in the back. Value stay. So the value stay has a building in the back that is separate from the other portions of the building and they wanted to leave that closed. But that still attracts, it's still an attractive nuisance to people that are gonna go in there and do criminal activity. And it's an area that's gonna be hard to keep secure and hard to supervise. So this would not allow any partial opening. Now, there are exceptions for that. So if, for instance, you are a licensed hotel and you have a catastrophic event, like a fire or a flood, something like that happens, you would be allowed to continue to operate while that part of your facility is being rehabilitated. So long as you are actively engaged in rehabilitating that part of the building. So we have to find what that means. So you'd have to, you know, at least at a minimum, be submitting an insurance claim, hiring licensed contractors, retaining architects, engineers, obtaining building permits, making some sort of progress. And it has to be done within a reasonable amount of time. So you can't have a fire this year and then three years from now, you know, just roll around to trying to get that open. It has to be something that is timely. So failure to progress or complete the repair could lead then to a suspension, revocation or denial of a license or a renewal. And that again is just trying to hold them accountable for making sure they're they're getting the the property back to where the city needs it. There's unlawful acts in general. Obviously, it's gonna be unlawful to operate a business without a license. It's gonna be unlawful to maintain or operate a business in violation of any provisions of the code. And specific to lodging facilities, it's going to be unlawful to occupy a room with a lodging facility that is not licensed. So if the lodging facility is not licensed and they're supposed to display those licenses so people can see right as they walk in, whether or not their their license is valid, if they don't have a valid license, then you could be charged for staying there. If that's the case, although I I don't know how often that would happen, but it's a potential under this. The other thing that is important here, and I did not include a slide, but under these new ordinances, this new ordinance, if it passed, because there are some significant changes, once it passed, all currently licensed lodging facilities would have ninety days to reapply. So they would have to reapply for a license and go under these criteria. Now, the way that we have this planned, and I've talked to finance to do this, is that we would try and coincide that with their annual renewals, which happen toward the end of the year, so that that routing can begin and those inspections can begin to happen. All of those inspections are supposed to happen already. The only one that's new would be the police department. So the police department would have to staff that so that they could get those renewals and those reapplications processed timely. But that's, that's the, the goal would be to have everybody re-renew or reapply under the new ordinance. So those are the the highlights for the specific regulations that would go in place as far as lodging. The general the ones that are applicable to all licenses are what I'm going to go over now. And generally, what we've done is we've just further defined some things. So we've defined the licensing officer as a director of finance. They specifically, under the ordinance now, have the the power to develop application forms. They can require all applicable inspections, so even going beyond what we've put in here, if they think an inspection by Public Works is necessary, then they can have Public Works go over there and inspect them. If they think there may be a zoning issue, they can have zoning go and inspect. The licensee would be required to cooperate and then zoning would have to sign off on that renewal or that application. The licensing officer currently, if you you have the licensing officer acting on the license, if there's an appeal, the appeal also goes to the licensing officer, which is the director of finance. So under this new code, these new amendments, the licensing officer would appoint the hearings officer that would then appear, hear appeals. So there would be a separation from the director to the hearings officer, provides a little bit more due process. That could be the municipal court or it could be a private person, whoever the hearings officer appointed. The new ordinance also expands the information that is needed to apply for. And again, this is just going to getting more information so that the finance department is better able to vet these applications. So it's gonna require a little bit more information, some filling out So it's going to require a little bit more information, some filling out of forms. People are going to have to take a little bit more time, but it's going to help the city better vet the applicants. So you have to give your name of your entity, identify the officers, directors, managers. You have to provide proof that the company's in good standing with the Colorado Secretary of State. You have to provide certification that it, your location complies with all zoning codes, that's already required, it's just further spelled out. You have to certify that your premises complies with all building health and fire codes. Again, that's already required for most, for a lot of businesses, but now it would be for all businesses that have a physical location. You'd have to submit certification that you've met with the police department and come up with a mitigation or mediation plan, if that's required. You'd have to have certification, and this is a self-certification. So this isn't anything that you have to get from another jurisdiction, but you're going to attest to it when you apply. There's going to be a section where it says you're telling the truth and you affirm that all the information you're supplying in the application is truthful. You have to certify that you haven't had a license been revoked, suspended, or denied from another jurisdiction. So this, the new ordinance also clarifies grounds for denial. So if you fail to meet any of the licensing requirements, if they make a false statement, if they've had a license that's been revoked or suspended, if they've operated a business that was a public nuisance, if they owe any outstanding fees, fines, or liabilities to the city, or if they fail you, fail to timely renew. So if they don't renew it, there is a grace period built into our ordinances. After that grace period, which I, if I remember correctly, is ninety days, they don't renew within ninety days, then that would be cause for suspension or revocation. There is two appeal processes, one for the application process, one for the suspension, revocation process. So this is the first one, this is for the appeal process. So if their application is denied, they will have the ability to appeal. They have to request an appeal within fourteen days, hearing has to be held within forty-two days thereafter. So they're afforded that due process specifically under the ordinance. Here are the grounds for revocation and suspension, they're very similar to the other, what we just talked about, denial of the license, non-compliance. So if there's any outstanding orders, let's say the health department has ordered a business to do something and they haven't done it, and that is still outstanding, that could be grounds for suspension. If there's been a significant criminal act on the premises. So that means that if there's been a criminal act where there's been serious bodily injury, or if the police department has had to deploy a speci- a specific specialized unit, like the SWAT team, something like that, that would be a significant criminal act that could cause suspension or revocation, depending on the circumstances. If the operation of the business is found to negatively impact the health, safety, or welfare of its patrons or the community, it can be suspended, if they're delinquent for city taxes. If they're in violation of any provision of the municipal code, if they've made a false statement, if they've had a license revoked, or if the city determines that the business is a public nuisance. There is a provision in here, it was in our previous ordinance, it is still in this ordinance, that allows a summary action to be taken. If there is something that is so bad that it constitutes an emergency, then the licensing officer can act summarily without giving any prior notice. They can go in there and suspend or revoke a license. And if that does happen, again, they have due process rights for an appeal hearing. That notice has to be given, and that appeal hearing has to go to hearing within forty-two days. So that would be something that would be extreme, but it's possible that that could happen. And so that is essentially my presentation, I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Before I forget, I'm going to ask questions first. When we talk about holding the the owners responsible through the questions on the application, asking if they, you know, hold title to another nuisance property or another hotel and so forth. Having worked in the industry for many years, I noticed like my employer was a large owner of several assets, and they were all LLCs. Does that is the language in in our ordinance going to cover that type of question, the answer to that question? Like if they say, oh, say it's ABC LLC is applying, but they have D E N F LLC over here, they don't have anything else under ABC LLC. You see what I mean?
Sure, and they're going to be required, they're they're required to disclose the other companies that they're members of. So if they are a member of XYZ LLC that owns a lodging facility in Longmont, and they're licensed there, then they would be required to disclose that. Because it goes on the members of the LLC, not necessarily the LLC itself.
Okay, and then the last question is, I noticed that I had heard that Longmont put an ordinance in place requiring testing of in the, during the inspections for the making of drugs, you know, meth or use of meth, use of hard drugs that you can detect just by doing a test in the room. Are we requiring that these tests be done?
So we are not by this ordinance, we are not requiring that the testing be done. The health department has the ability to require that testing, and I believe they have, at least in one of the other instances that we've talked about tonight. But the ordinance itself, as it's written currently, does not require the meth testing. So the city would not request that now. The licensing officer has the ability, under the ordinance as written, require whatever other inspections that they deem necessary. So under that language, it's potential that the licensing officer could require those inspections, but it's not specific, it's not a a sign-off on the.
Well, the reason that they did it is because it was just bringing more accountability to the management and to the ownership. If they knew that mandatory-wise they were going to be tested, they kept those types of clientele. They didn't, they didn't offer them a room. And so it it deterred them from actually receiving lodging in the city of Longmont. So I'm just wondering if we looked into that and seeing if it is working to deter that type of clientele. I mean, anything helps, right? Because this is huge.
So we can certainly look at that, and then if you wanted to, we could amend it, but it is not in the current ordinance as written.
Okay, yeah, I would, I would like to see if we can add that because and and just see if it's, you know, what are the results happening there?
I can follow up with Longmont.
I appreciate that. Okay, Councilor Gomez.
Yeah, first of all, this kind of information you're giving is long overdue. And I compliment you guys, I have no problems complaining, as you can tell, but you guys deserve a lot compliments. Because if this stuff hasn't been done prior to this council being on, I want to know why not. But the things that you're doing here, are there other things that impact specifically the hotels? Like, were you able to gather any data in reference to immigrants or illegal immigrants, or those kind of numbers? Contact cards from the police department, that kind of stuff? Were you able to generate other information on how that's impacting specifically these hotels?
I don't think that we were able to get that specific. Mind you, on several of these occasions, Councilor Gomez, they had one individual who was renting five to ten hotel rooms under one name. And so the profiles and what they were registering, people and their names as, were not typically the people that were staying in the room, so.
Could be dozens in there.
Yeah.
Each room?
Yeah.
Okay, um, just curious, and I heard a number, I don't know how bizarre it is or not, I don't know how accurate it is, but I've heard it that, do we have as many as a hundred and seventy-seven businesses without licenses and that you're trying to solve now? Is that correct?
I I don't know the number, I don't know the answer to that.
I'll, I'm gonna say either or to be safe.
So again, are these businesses that are just simply unlicensed and has never obtained a license with the city?
When they explained it, when they said it to me, they made the statement that they know there's a hundred and seventy-seven businesses that don't have licenses. I didn't, I didn't ask them specifics, I didn't break it down, but I was kind of shocked by that. And that's why I'm just bringing it forward, I want to get clear that in my brain, it doesn't, I guess it doesn't matter. You guys are working in the right direction to try to get it solved, and that's a lot of revenue that that would help the city, but.
Correct.
Anything you can add, I would like to hear.
We do have a level of non-compliance with businesses who are not licensed or who have not renewed licensing. There is, I can tell you approximately about a hundred and thirty thousand dollars in licensing fees had not been paid as of March of this year for a lot of businesses. And these are those that we recognize who just haven't renewed. And again, out of this population, we have people who are no longer here, who close without giving us notice, shut their doors. We don't know if they're here or not, we don't have enough staff to go out and routinely check all of the the areas of businesses. And then we have those folks who come in and start businesses and don't obtain a license. And then we rely on social media, we rely on, and the community is very good about it. They'll call us and let us know, there's somebody unlicensed, I'm checking their license, and we'll get right on it and get them licensed. But there is a level of non-compliance that is is concerning, but we would need a a much larger staff in order to hone it in and bring it into, you know, a better figure. We do what we can, we send out notices, we again, look at social media and so on in our, in our community gives us a call, but there's, there's a fair amount of non-compliance.
So when push gets to shove here, it happens to some of these businesses, and again, I'm applauding you guys for being proactive, really. I mean, but when it comes to push to shove, what things do you, what just things you have at your disposal? To say, look, we're pushing and you're going to, you're going to comply. I mean, I guess you can go all the way up from fees, fines, liens, eminent domain, I don't know how that, you know, necessarily fit in. But can you kind of give me an idea what that means in reference to if we have to get tough, what does it mean?
Yes, so recently, we have a compliance technician who is just handling that, our compliance issues. She is part-time now, and I put together an agenda for her that she goes out and to these businesses directly, and either they get ticketed or they get licensed, one of the two. So we have on a daily basis, probably, I sent her to ten, fifteen businesses who either haven't paid taxes or are not licensed, or haven't renewed their license, and we're issuing tickets as rapidly as we can. To make the point to the businesses that, you know, our theme in our office is there one set of rules, and everybody in this community will need to follow them.
And you think they're complying, or they, you have the opportunity to have them comply yet?
They are, they are, they'll come forward. But again, if we had somebody that had more hours and we had two people going out there to the community doing this, I mean, we can really put a dent in that, but that's what we can do, that's at our disposal now. So if if I become aware of somebody who's not licensed in this city, they will become licensed, and I'll take every effort I can to get them licensed. For those folks who are non-compliant and owing us taxes, then we have different measures of ticketing them, assessing them, and bringing them forward as well.
So to solve this, are you, are you looking at maybe hiring another person or two people? Or what it might take, and what, so we can get this solved once and for all?
Well, I I would love to hire two more compliance technicians to help us. You know, given the budget, I don't know if we're there or we're capable. We've never really had additional staff in our office, and we do need it, because this is, you know, the revenue to the city that we need to get out there and we need to collect and let this community know of our businesses that, you know, for those businesses who are on time and compliant, we have to show the other side that we are helping them by getting those who are not compliant to become compliant. So we have to have some fair playing fields, and yes, I would love to have more staff do that, we could, we could certainly use it.
Thank you.
President Aleth.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you for the presentation. Let's see, I don't know if you could cover everything in here, because you try and read it, and it's, it's, it's very in-depth. My first question is, is there's an, currently, all hotels, motels, boarding houses, whatever, are inspected yearly by the health department, the building department, and fire department, correct? So I understand that this, this comes out of the sheer horror of what went on in at the roadway in and the value stay. But I mean, sitting here, just on the outside looking in, those motels or hotels or flop houses or whatever you want to call them, were inspected every year by the building department, the health department, and the fire department. We look at the pictures, and actually with Chief Knoller, I walked through the roadway in, and it's unbelievable when you walk through there that they could have ever passed any kind of inspection from any of those departments. So I wonder why this will make a difference, because I've been with two administrations before this one, who literally tried to shut the road, shut the roadway in down once, opened it back up, threatened to shut it down, opened it back up, all the while knowing what was going on at the roadway in. The value stay in, and I hope I'm, the roadway is on fifty or, so I'm talking about the value stay first. But the roadway in has been a criminal hotspot for years, and being inspected again by those three organizations, and nothing happened. We get a new mayor all of a sudden, and she does great things, and we go in there and we shut them down and and do the right things. So tell me how this is going to change that.
So first thing I want to say is that, remember when you go in there to inspect, the, the inspectors don't necessarily have the right to go into rooms that are occupied. So what they show them are rooms that are unoccupied and typically are staged and prepared for those inspections. So that, that has a lot to do with what was happening. But I think the overall arching thing is the appetite for shutting these hotels down. And I don't think the city had that appetite to do that before. And that's what's changed with the current administration and the mayor being willing to do this. So it's not that we didn't have the ability to do it before, but I don't think there was an appetite to follow through with that.
Here's my point, and I get what you're saying, but here's my point. Because of these two bad actors, now you want to implement a whole new policy that affects every lodging organization. It affects the Marriott, the Hilton, it, all the good actors now have to jump through two hundred and fifty thousand hoops to be in business because we failed to do our job as a city with all these other organizations to do what was right for the community and shut these down five years ago, six years ago, seven years ago, to literally go in there and 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 do what the community expects us to do. I think you're putting an onus on good operators because of two bad operators. And that's anti-business, if you ask me. I understand why this is in front of us, and I understand the purpose behind it, but literally, we, we have things in place, and we've had things in place for the last twenty years that could have shut, shut them down, we just chose. For the last twenty years that could have shut, shut them down. We just chose not to shut them down.
I think you would be surprised on the hotels that you speak of as being these excellent, uh, business license holders in the community. There are other hotels that right now have not been inspected this year. Um, and. With these tools that are being in this ordinance, we'll be able to go out. And as far as adding additional hoops to jump through. I mean, you have to look at, not only are these two hotels causing havoc. But the businesses that are in the surrounding areas, the value stay. The auto store next door has a fourteen foot fence next to it. The O'Reilly's auto parts across the street, they came to my office and thanked me after we shut them down. Because they said that they had never done as much business as they did since they've been shut down. One year fellow councilman is restaurant is butted right up to the roadway end, same story. So. If the hotels are doing what they're supposed to be doing, President Aleph, these aren't going to be additional hoops to jump through. These are the same hoops that they're jumping through right now. This is really going to be a tool for the city to go after the bad apples. And the only reason that we were able to go after the value stay in the roadway end is because they were not licensed at the time that we went after them. The previous year they were licensed and you could not have done what we did. But the timing was right. They did not have a license. They should not have been operating in the city. Uh, not only did, uh, one of the locations, uh, well, after both of them were shut down, they went through a tax auditing process. One of the establishments had to pay the city over a hundred thousand dollars in back taxes that they had not been paying, uh, for their. Uh, stays and how long people were there. So this is a tool that will help to eliminate any more. Hotels that want to do this. This is not additional hoops. If these, uh, establishments are doing what they're supposed to be doing in the first place. This will be an easy process for them to go through.
Have we, have we talked to the good operators and said, is this a good deal for you?
We have not.
Okay.
Can, can I add something, uh?
Sure.
Counselor that addresses some of the issues that you're bringing up. Um, you know, since about two thousand and fourteen, when I became a captain, I've been dealing with, uh, those two hotels in particular. And we've tried multiple times to get those hotels shut down. We've tried multiple times to, uh, obviously through patrols to impact the crime that is happening in those, in those, uh, areas at those hotels. And just for some perspective, last week, our officers handled one thousand three hundred and eight calls for service. The, the value stay alone in the one location had over one thousand six hundred and twenty-six calls for service in a year. Um, there, there's probably not another location in the city that has anywhere near that number that isn't like a hospital where we're getting called there all the time. Because of a variety of different events. Um, one of the issues we run into, uh, like, like, uh, um, uh. Ms. Sykes mentioned, that we can't, the inspectors for the fire department, regional and, and the, uh. The health department can't inspect rooms that are occupied because they have a expectation of privacy. You would need a search warrant to get into those rooms and search them. Which creates a problem for them. The addition of our analysis of crime in the area and crime at the location. And going through and doing these, uh, SEP TED reviews, it's crime prevention through environmental design does a couple of different things. It adds another layer that has not been looked at over the last twenty years. When you look at hotel motel, uh, uh, stuff. Uh, when I was first in narcotics, we used to have a hotel motel interdiction unit and we would go there every day. And we would get, uh, the registry of who was staying at those hotels. Uh, Colorado state law changed and now we, they are not required to give us those, those room stays. So it inhibits some of that activity. But us to do an analysis on a hotel to say, these are the number of calls for service they have, these are what they are. This is the major calls for service is not a hoop that they're jumping through. It's a hoop we're jumping through. And I think it's time well spent. When you look at sixteen hundred calls in a year at one hotel. Um, also the SEP TED review is a benefit to the business because it, our officers are trained in how to. To, to, uh, do crime reduction through the design of space. And it helps them if they want to, to implement those things. Um, so I think that there's a couple of things and I, 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 I think it is something that this community needs. We had two hotels in the span of five years that became, uh, uh, you know. Locations that, that caused crime in such a, such a widespread area. That the reduction after the closure speaks for itself as, as far as the, the damage that those hotels were causing. So I, I understand what you're saying, but my, my, my comeback would be that the SEP TED review is something that any of those good hotels. Would probably appreciate to have. They may not be able to implement all of them. If they can't, there's no requirement that they do. If they're operating otherwise in a good, uh, manner, they have the. They don't have the calls for service that the other hotels do. And it allows us finally, as a police department, to have some say. In what's happening at these hotels in the inspection process. And that's what's been lacking over the last. Eight, nine years, when we look at what's happened at these two hotels in particular. Is that we have cried out to all of these inspectors that were having all of these problems here. And despite their inspections, it's had zero impact on the ability of those hotels to operate.
Well. I get that you can't go in rooms, but nobody could have walked into the front door of the value stay. Nobody that had any, I, whether it was fire, whether it was building department or whether it was, uh. Uh, the health department and say that that place should be open.
What I'm going to tell you is they didn't.
I, I get that.
So.
So now because they failed in their responsibility, this is all I'm, this is my whole argument. Because they fail in their responsibility, we don't hold them accountable. We're going to make it more onerous for the majority of businesses. That are in this line of business to be in business. I don't disagree with what you're saying, that these are good. Good things to have and, and it's another layer and so on and so forth. But I just want to point out that we're literally missing the fact that. Other organizations let the city down. And we're just saying, we're giving them a pass and saying that's okay, because what we're gonna do is. Strengthen our, our, our ordinances so we can even further tighten down on this and. Get more tools and you're gonna have to, and I, I. I guess if they came and the, the lodger says, this is a great deal, we fully support it. You know, I'd shut up, but I, I think that. I don't know why we're not holding the other, and I don't know how you do that, but. It, it's a shame that we're in this position and nobody else has come to the carpet and said, you, you know, the reason we approve that is because, you know. That black stuff coming down the walls didn't look dangerous to us or.
Well, I think the buck stops here because we're the ones that issued the license. So they all just sign off, but we're the ones that issue the license. If you don't have a license, you cannot operate.
Well, since, since this has happened, we have started meeting with all those other groups on a regular basis too. To talk about more cooperation, more communication between all of the organizations. So. That's been something that's been good that's come out of this too. And that isn't just specific to hotels, but. Things in lots of different realms within the city. Um, but we have opened those communications and those, um, regulatory agencies are working closer together. So that hopefully, things like this will not happen in the future. Um, and, and that's the goal.
I'm Counselor Flores.
Uh, you had a ratio of, uh, rooms to crime. I think that was the, the term. It was on one of your slides. And, uh, I got the impression that that was going to be a ratio. That would determine whether or not the police department is going to go in and do an inspection at that facility. Did I get that wrong or is every, every lodging facility going to be inspected by the police department?
Every lodging facility is going to be inspected for calls for service to that facility. If that, if that ratio is above that amount, then they have to meet with the police department. Um, to go over a mitigation remediation plan. If it's under that ratio, then what the police department can do is they can provide recommendations to them of how environmentally they might improve. Some things, but they would sign off on the license.
And I'm, I'm thinking in terms of, uh, a hotel that doesn't have any calls for service. They might be, they might call the police department because they've got, they see strangers out in the parking lot or whatever. But if they don't have any, I mean, if their record is pretty clean, like that's not a problem area. Why go in and inspect them at that point?
Well, all they'd be looking at is their calls for service, though they wouldn't physically go into the building. Is my understanding. They would be looking at their calls for service. So if that's the case. They would, it would just be on a routing sheet, just like it is for the fire department and that now that hotel would have to go through the same process. The police department would just be another, um, entity that would sign off on that license before it was approved.
And then, uh, our, our bed and, uh, bed and breakfast facilities also would be including. And what about Airbnb, uh? Uh, those are a lot, those are tough to, to quantify, but.
So this does not address like, um, VRBOs or Airbnbs. It does address bed and breakfast. Um, any, any place where someone is renting a room overnight would be included in this.
Okay. Thank you for clarifying that.
Counselor Gomez.
Yeah, Chief, can you, can you give me an idea how this, the, the right to privacy? In reference to the hotels, uh. Being able to reserve the right to inspect. When those two guys bump up against each other, which one has the bigger hand in this?
Well, it depends on what the issue is. So, so when you rent a hotel room, you are renting that room for the night. And it's, it's, it's not held to the highest standard like your, like your home is, but it's like right below it. So the reasons why we can go into that room are if the hotel asks us to go in there and remove somebody. And short of that, you can't go into that room without a search warrant or consent. Um, you can obtain consent to enter the room if the person agrees to allow you in. And then you can go in and, and theoretically, uh, inspect it. And all of these other entities that are doing these inspections are government entities. And the government is held to that standard, whether it's the police, fire or, or public, you know, the public health or. The, uh, um, regional building. So. That's where the, the trouble comes in, that if all these rooms that are messed up, they're saying are rented. Uh, we can't go in there absent consent or warrant. And generally for an inspection purpose, you're not going to be able to obtain a warrant.
So the consent of the people that are renting a room versus the consent. Of the hotel.
Correct.
Might be thinking they're setting up a meth operation. I mean.
Right. Well, there's a difference there. There's a difference there, though. The difference is that if the hotel believes that criminal activity is going on and they want them removed, then we can go in and remove them.
Okay.
But to go in and inspect is a different level of, of intrusion. Um, that, that wouldn't be met by some kind of criminal act. Um, so.
I'm just curious.
Counselor Tino.
If, if we're done, I want to, Chief, in your presence, compliment Captain Anderson. And his department, Sergeant Smith, they've been absolutely wonderful to help us. In District Two with the problems we have. They are unbelievable. Thank you.
I'd just like to say that, you know, most of these occupants are the unhoused here in Pueblo. And that, uh, we give vouchers for them to go and stay there. Not necessarily the city, but you know, all of our nonprofit agencies and so forth. And some of those funds come from the city to buy those vouchers and. You know, I think mostly the community thinks of, you know, children having a place to stay because there's a lot of children and a lot of senior citizens that. I don't have a place to stay. So as if we can go and make it as safe as possible for them. When they do lay their heads down at night, um, that would be nice. And that's all I have to say about it. So thank you for your presentation this evening and thank you for your efforts to. Try to change this situation here to a more positive situation. Thank you. And so, um, finally, we're gonna, the chief isn't going anywhere. He's gonna sit down and he's going, we're gonna talk about his budget for twenty twenty-five. Welcome back, Chief. Deputy Chief, um, Garcia, thank you. And, uh, go ahead and get started.
Good evening, um, members of council, our work session chair, Maestri and Madam Mayor. This presentation is, uh, to explain the twenty twenty-five budget request from the Public Police Department. Just to get started, uh, a little bit of background, right now our budget is divided into two different areas. The one-on-one, which is our general fund budget and the PSST budget, which is the public safety sales tax that was approved by the voters. Um, in twenty twenty-four, our, uh, total budget for the year was thirty-eight million, two hundred and twenty-six thousand, nine hundred and sixty-nine dollars. Of that amount, approximately two point three million were operating costs. And thirty-five point nine million was personnel, uh, and personnel related cost, uh, whether that be benefits. Or, uh, uh, you know, different, different things, retirement and all that stuff that's added into the personnel budget. Um, the public safety sales tax budget, uh, allocation in, in two thousand and twenty-four was five million dollars. Of that, three point two million was, was personnel costs, again, related to the twenty-four officers that are in the, uh, PSST fund. And the operating budget was one point eight million dollars. Um. Year to date, we have already spent one point six million of that. Some of that was in vehicles and in rolling stock. And we have approximately two hundred and nine thousand dollars, uh, left in the PSST fund for, for the, uh, operating expenses. Um, and these, these funds, uh, will carry over to the next year if we were not to expend them. They stay in the PSST sales, uh, tax account, unlike the general fund, which if we don't spend it, it goes back to the general fund. Uh, balance. So these funds in the safety sale, the public safety sales tax can be used, uh. Only on, uh, items related to, uh, to be officers. Uh, or police officers related to purchases like police vehicles, equipment, computers. Laptops, vests, uh, uh, body worn cameras come out of that account at about six hundred and fifty thousand dollars a year. And it's also used to purchase, uh, uh, in-car camera systems for our patrol cars. Um, the PSST will be up for another vote in twenty twenty-seven. So, uh, where are we at right now? Uh, due to several vacancies, both civilian and sworn, the Public Police Department is currently under budget on personnel costs. And I need to explain how this works because we're actually not under budget. Um, as of June, fifty, the fifty percent reporting period of our year, we had proc, used approximately. Forty-three point two percent of our total allocated twenty twenty-four budget. But breaking this down, we used, uh, a total of forty-one point zero-two percent of our personnel budget. And fifty-two point five-five percent of our operating budget. What we've been able to do, uh, is transfer some of the salary savings into our operating budget as we've had to do. Every year for about the past ten or fifteen years in order to maintain our operating budget and pay, pay bills, pay subscriptions. Uh, purchase vehicles and a number of other things that we have to do throughout the year. So there have been several transfers from this salary savings into our operating budget to cover gaps in funding. Which attribute to the percentage used, uh, of the operating budget when the revised budget was factored in. When you look at where we are with our original budget, uh, expenditures, uh. It shows personnel expenses are at forty point zero nine. They should be at fifty percent during this portion of the year. Um, we, our operating costs are at seventy-one point one-six percent at this halfway point. So we've transferred, and again, I'm trying to explain the same thing a different way. We've transferred a significant number of funds from salary savings to pay a, a variety of different things. Uh, some of those things include the bills, uh, the, the lights, to keep the lights on. Um, the, uh, jail costs, uh, have gone up over the last several years. Um, and we're not appropriately budgeted for those costs in our budget. We're not appropriately budgeted for our utility bills in our budget. Um, we're not appropriately, uh, uh, budgeted for a number of other line items in our operating budget. And again, year over year, uh, going back, uh, at least ten years. We've had to use salary savings in order to pay these, these basic operating needs. So this is a historical perspective of our operating and personnel budget, uh, going back to two thousand and ten, so fourteen years. And if you look at our, uh, initial operating and our, uh, revised operating budget, which goes back to two thousand and fourteen. So ten years, you can see that, um, from two thousand and ten to twenty twenty-four. There's basically a six hundred thousand dollar difference in, uh, from one year to the next and whether our budget, uh, where our budget is. Um, you can also see, uh, from two thousand and fourteen to two thousand and twenty-three. You can also see from 2014 to 2023, the increase in the revised operating budget, which is what we actually needed to operate for that year. You can also see how our personnel expenses have, have, have changed as well. So our operating budget over the past decade has been insufficient to maintain our funds. And as the last slide shows, it has not been adjusted for inflation in 14 years. The combined total of our 101 budget and our PSST operating budget is $4.1 million. Just for some perspective, and I know Greeley is not one of the police departments that we use as a comparable city for purposes of salary. However, they are actually very close as it comes to the size of their, of the cities. They're, they're at 109,000, we're at 111. They take about half of our calls for service. They're about 73,000, a little over 73,000 calls for service in 2023. In that same year, we had over 144,000 calls for service. They have a total of 224 FTEs. We have 315. 158 of theirs are sworn, 230 of ours are sworn. Again, those are authorized numbers. I don't know what their actual strength is. But if you look at their operating budget, it's $11.1 million or 27% of their budget. Our operating budget is 4.1, which is 9.5% of our total budget. And that's if you combine that 4.1 million is if you combine the PSST and the general fund budgets together. So again, I, I say all that to say this, so for the last 14 years, at least, we couldn't find data going back further in our records on what the operating budgets were. Our department has had to rely on salary savings year after year in order to do just the general operating needs of the department. So I'm going to turn it over to Joe now to continue the discussion on the budget.
Good evening. So when we look at our, oh, slide, but it's our professional services costs have gone up. The line item is 53001, and that is what we use to pay for our professional services. That pays for background investigations to hire all of our employees, both civilian and sworn. Psychological exams for all of our officers. Transcription services, which help out not only our recruits through training, but also our detectives on the larger caseload. What we're asking for is for the increase of 75,000 to allow us to be properly funded in this, and I know there's a chart up there that shows what that increase is. If we go to contract services, that's another line item. That one we use to pay for our copiers, our printers all over the, the station that we have. Some are used by patrols, some are used by traffic, narcotics division. Language line services are running anywhere between $1,000, $1,500 a month. And that's for us to be able to communicate with people who speak a different language other than English. Our cleaning crew, which keeps the place clean. Then our Pueblo County and Los Anamos County jail bills are also billed out of that. That line item is normally funded, I think, at $200,000. And we're asking for an increase of 495,000. We're going to be way over that. We've already transferred several hundred thousand dollars in to make the bills for just this year. By the end of the year, we're probably going to have to transfer in another couple hundred thousand dollars or we won't be able to put people in jail. The next slide will show that our PPD arrests costs 0.09% of our overall jail expenses. In other words, the people that we've actually put into jail for a first time offense or could jail for a municipal offense cost the city $360. The municipal court costs for people who were sentenced to stay in municipal court is paid out of our budget. That has cost us over $381,665 to date. And that is a little over $180,000 over our budget, what we're allotting. Comes to 99% of the overall jail budget. Our fleet repair item is depleted. We had to transfer money into that. Generally, we're sitting a little over $400,000 in that. We're on track to spend over $470,000 in that line item. And again, it's been underfunded. We would, we're asking for an increase in that line item as well, so we can keep our cars running. Historically, our project savings, we've been able to tap into project savings to outfit, excuse me, to outfit our police cars. So at, at the end of the year, we would put X amount of money into a project that would go through council, get passed with the budgets. Let's say that was to buy 10 marked police cars. And there was, let's say, $50,000 left over in that that wasn't spent. We were allowed to spend that money to outfit maybe an older police car, maybe modify it to be used by code enforcement or somebody else. That practice has been stopped. We're not allowed to do that anymore. So we need to put that money back into the regular fund. Since we can't use that, we've never been able to have, we've never been funded for repairs. Our current repair cost to the city is budgeted at $5,000. I can't paint a car for $5,000. The last car we had painted was a CSO car and that was about $8,000. We're also not allowed to use Public Safety Sales Tax Funds for code enforcement vehicles or CSO vehicles because they're not police vehicles. So for those, we have to use salary savings to either purchase cars or outfit them. So we're asking for an increase in that line item. Our police interceptors, our Ford Explorers, the ones we're buying this year, cost us at $58,000 each year. Annually, this cost does go up. Upfitting new vehicles for patrol are roughly $33,000 a car. 13,000 of that is just the cameras that are required under state law to be in those cars. In 2018, the cost for that same Ford Explorer was $34,000. It only cost $20,000 to outfit at that time. And at that time, the in-car camera systems were $7.5,000 per car. So things have certainly gone up in price, but our budget has never been the same. We have never been funded for rolling stock. We have been able to keep somewhat afloat using our Public Safety Sales Tax. But again, we can't buy our special vehicles that are needed and we can't fund any CSO vehicles nor code enforcement vehicles out of that. Code enforcement vehicles are not a funded line item. We are proposing that we fund that out of the general budget at $200,000. They have several trucks, several vehicles, several trailers that we need to not only maintain, but replace when those go out. And like I said, we do not have any money for that in our budget. Since introduction of body worn cameras, the cost per quarter requests continue to rise. A lot of that cost is, an hour of body worn camera will take a little over two hours just to review and redact, which must be done for every, every quarter request that comes through. Without additional staff, that backlog of reports and requests continues to rise. Since adopting our differential reporting, the record section has increased the number of reports they've been able to take over the year. They have a 19% increase in the number of reports that they were taking between 24 this year and last year. Records personnel assist patrol by taking reports via P2C. In other words, people that get online and report something on the computer, or they can also make a phone call in and file a report that way. We are currently undergoing a staffing study to see where we can either reduce or increase staff is needed, and that will be prepared for next year. Currently, our record staffing has fluctuated between nine to 13 personnel for several, past several years. And like I said, we have a very huge backlog of reports and core requests that are pending.
As part of this budget, there are a couple of additional FTEs that we are requesting. One of them is our, is a additional crime analyst. Our current crime analyst has become overwhelmed with the level of work. We have looked at trying to hire a part-time crime analyst. However, we've had no success in hiring somebody at a part-time level, partly due to the, the pay and partly due to the work that needs to be done in order to become a crime analyst. They're looking for full-time employment. So what the addition of this FTE would allow us to do, currently, we run comp stat data weekly on where crime is taking place and where officers are, what our, what our data is for response times and a number of other things. With the addition of the real-time crime center and the increased data that is coming in, another crime analyst would be, would be helpful in order for us to fully utilize all of these different technological advances and also make sure that we are getting the information to our officers, our watch commanders, that they need to in order to address the crime as it, as it is happening. We also would like to add two more CSOs. The Community Service Officer Program has been a huge help to our, not only our patrol officers, it frees them up to handle more serious calls, but also to our community and where they can get somebody from the police department to respond in some of these other calls a little bit faster. We have done differential reporting, which does push a number of crimes to a online reporting status. But the call response times would be much quicker to those calls that don't fall into the differential reporting, where we could send a CSO to, to handle those calls, conduct follow-up, gather evidence in cases and that kind of thing. We are also asking to civilianize our accreditation manager position. Currently, that position is held by a corporal who does an immense amount of work to make sure that we maintain our Calea and Colorado, our Colorado CACP accreditation. The reason why those things are important is it helps ensure that we are staying up with best practices in our profession, that we are being judged and, and held to a standard by an organization outside of our police department to ensure that we are following these best practices, that if we say our policy says that we do something, that in fact, we do it. And that's what these accreditation bodies do for us. They also help us in, in, in event that there's litigation, the fact that we follow these best practices is, is sometimes helpful in those scenarios. So what we are asking for overall is an increase in our operating budget of, of 1.1 million. We are also asking for approximately $382,000 in personnel costs in 2025 with those positions that I just mentioned. Some future things that we, we want to just put on your radar as we move into the future is, is, in the next few years, the department will need to start paying for upgraded handheld and in-car radios. Both cost about $4,500 a piece. Those systems, the city of Pueblo has not had to purchase those systems for about 25 years because they were funded through SEPTED. Now, I've talked to Lori Penns, the IT Director. This is not something we're anticipating bringing forward to you in the next couple of years. But it is something that about year three, four or five from now, the city is going to have to invest money into that infrastructure. Other things that, that we are just want to put on the radar as we move into the future is the ability to purchase an incident command post vehicle. You know, we had a SWAT incident last week where several of our officers were shot at. Unfortunately, they, an officer returned fire and, and killed the individual. But one of the issues that we run into with our extreme temperature variations here in Pueblo, whether that's the winter time or whether that's the summertime, is the ability to house people that are doing many of the jobs at the, at those scenes in a, in an environment that they can use the restroom without needing to drive to the store where they can get cool off in 110 degree heat when they're, when they're out there on the command post. We were out there for six hours, I think, that day. And most of those individuals were standing outside the entire time. This also would allow our drone operators who were used throughout that six-hour period, a place to charge their drones, a place where they could be in comfort while they're flying their drones and watching them and do a number of other things. Again, this is not something we're asking for in 25, but it's something we want to put on your radar. The other technology piece that is coming and it's, it's, it is, it is going to be a game changer in how law enforcement works. Some of you came and toured our real-time crime center and I talked about this. It's the drone as a first responder model. What this does is allow us, it would allow us to, on certain, on calls that are in, within the reach of the drone, we could launch that drone and get eyes on that area or that call within about 30 seconds. And we can start relaying information to the officers. That's helpful in a number of ways. Number one, a lot of times when we get the call, before we get there, the, the call is no longer ongoing. The person is left in that 10, 15, 20 minutes of time that the officer gets there and nothing's going on, could have been used in a better way. Number two, there's a couple of instances around the country, and I'm going to generalize, I don't want to pick anyone in particular, where you have an incident of somebody saying that there's a kid at, at this park with a gun, waving the gun around. If you can get a drone out there before the officers come on scene and we can start feeding data back to those officers about the veracity of whether it is an actual gun or a toy or, or something like that, the officers can go into that call with a much clearer mindset of what they're going to see when they get there, which helps keep our officer safe and also helps keep our community safe. And those are just two examples of where this program would be hugely beneficial. Again, it is not something that we are asking for in the 25 budget, but it is something that I think is, is worthwhile in our community to look at, especially when you look at the combination of what we can currently do with our real-time crime center. To have this additional capability would be immensely helpful to our officers, both en route and potentially keeping them from going to calls where we can determine that there's no criminal activity and there's no need for the cops to be there anyway. So I think that ends our, our budget request for this year. Be happy to answer any questions.
Counselor Gomez.
What, what's the cost difference between a community service officer and a certified peace officer?
The, looks like a starting CSO makes about $50,700 a year. With benefits, that'd be $82,475 a year. I don't know what the starting sal, starting benefits of a, of a patrolman are, but the starting salary for a patrol officer is $72,000 a year. Give or take. With benefits, it would be, I would say, high 90s.
High 90s.
Maybe, maybe just over 100.
Okay. I'm also curious, when you said you had to outfit or get vehicles for code enforcement and, and believe me, there's plenty of work and violations out there on the street where they can, I'm thinking they can generate their own if they're doing a little bit more of their job because I get an awful lot of complaints about code enforcement not doing their jobs. And why we have to figure out how you're going to pay for that operation's vehicles just blows me away. Can you give me some, can you justify that somehow?
Yeah, they're in my budget. The CSOs report to me. So all of their stuff comes out of their budgets and I'm going to be honest with you. I don't, I don't have the data here in front of me, but our code enforcement officers are, are working extremely hard. They, they have almost doubled their numbers from last year as far as what they are doing is, as far as abatements, trash that they're taking to the dump, the number of citations and violations that they're investigating and that kind of thing. So I would, I'll be honest with you, I would take umbrage with the fact that, that, that people suggest our code enforcement officers are not working because they, they are working extremely hard.
And then I'll just add to what the chief said. We currently do have at least one code enforcement still out of service. He had a surgery that he had to go do on his back. And another one who's just now returning after an illness. He's been out for a while, so they have been down in staffing, but their numbers are well over what they were the year before. I understand, but that's not going to satisfy the constituents I have to report to. The other thing is, I'm, one of the things that's with police enforcement, I've been studying this for a long time. Law enforcement is very natured, is not considered very creative or very imaginative. It's just not, it's not there. And thinking outside the box is very difficult for them. And I know what I'm talking about. I used to do a lot of stuff, the Sheriff's Department came up with a lot of programs. I used to do a lot of stuff, the Sheriff's Department came up on a lot of programs as a director of research and development. So I know how it's hard for you guys, I got it. But if you look at some of the things that are thinking outside the box, you have fourteen officers that are running resource operations for schools, okay? And I don't know what the level of the crime activity there as opposed to the street, what percentages are different. But I think it's a little easier to have an a a resource officer probably in a school than a certified officer. And from what I understand, Chief Noel, you were you were confronted by Corcentino from the Security Service Operation he runs. And the idea was coming that couldn't you replace those people that were inside those schools, put them out on the street, they're certified officers, and have some of these co- so, community service officers trained to a level that would take care of the school operations, and you have fourteen certified officers on the street?
You know, I suppose you could do anything you wanted to, but whether it would make a whole lot of sense to have people that aren't trained to the level of police officers protecting the the most critical asset of our community, I don't know. Certainly, D sixty would have to be brought into that thought process, and and D sixty has not approached me to ask us to remove SROs from the school. You know, I I don't know of many other communities that are using security guards at the capacity that you're talking about. I think that there may be some charter schools that do because they don't fall under our coverage. But I would, I don't know if I would want my kids going to a school where a security guard was going to be conducting the the security there, given the level of training they receive and the hours and out, thousands of hours of training that our officers receive, particularly when it comes to active shooter, when it comes to the stuff that is also taught at the national level, when it comes to school resource officers and and how they work. Also, what would end up happening is we would end up getting called to the schools to to deal with criminal behavior that was happening at the school anyway. So why not have a sworn officer, and believe me, I would take is, I'd take cops wherever I can get them. But if my cops are going to end up going there anyway, it it doesn't make a whole lot of sense to take our officers out of there, lose the connection that we have with our kids that we build at that level, and then in- insert an officer there when a criminal behavior happens and expect them to be able to make a decision based on historical knowledge of how that kid's performed in the school and not not be influenced by what teachers and principals are are asking us to do maybe in a certain circumstance. What I will tell you is I grew up in Las Vegas, Nevada in the eighties, and the school district had their own police force then. And they were trained to the same level, they had to be meet Nevada post requirements and are sworn police officers that patrol strictly the Clark County School District. I don't know that in Colorado, that could, that same model couldn't happen, and D sixty could hire their own police officers to patrol their schools. But right now, we contract with them, and I I for one think that that's that's the responsible thing is the chief of police in the city of Pueblo to do is to have police officers at those schools.
Well, there's so much basic information you're not, you're not answering for me. There's so many variables here, you don't, you haven't been able to tell me that in the schools, how do they compare to an officer on the street? You didn't, you didn't answer that, that's number one. Number two, the things you're talking about in Vegas, we're having a hard time getting vehicles for code enforcement according to you. They're completely different operation, different examples, so I get lost when you tell me stuff like this.
Well, I think it's pretty simple, sir. What I'm telling you is I don't think a security guard in the school system would work as well as a police officer. They don't have anywhere near the level of training our first-year officers do.
I'm not object.
So I don't know what other basic information I can provide you, sir.
I think you got to do a study of what's happening in the schools compared to what's on the street. And then you can make your, you can figure out an answer once you have that basic scenario set down for each, but to make it just off the cuff and saying, well, you know, let's find a reason why we can't get it done as a problem to how we might be able to get it done. That's the problem I have here.
Has anybody talked to D sixty and asked them what they want?
I can't tell you that. I think that somebody has to talk to them, but I'm just saying, I think you got to be a little bit open-minded. I think the fact that there's not a lot of creativity, we know that law enforcement in its very, very nature is not open-minded. They are very territorial and everything, and I know this from being there. It's very resistant to change because it's always as somehow taking away the power or the authority or the control. We got to ease up. We've got so many ways we can answer these problems if we just take the time to listen to each other, work with each other, and open the doors. That's what I don't see happening in law enforcement. That's my opinion.
And and I'll just add to that, we're getting ready to go for the next twenty twenty-five contract for school resource officers that is coming up. So we can certainly certainly broach that question. I want to sit down with D sixty in the next month or two.
Thank you.
Hey. Counselor Latino, are you?
I I guess I was going to say, having been in education myself and in the largest school system in the state, and having worked with both in 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 Jefferson County, there's a number of law enforcement agencies from Lakewood to the Golden PD, to the Jefferson County Sheriff's Department, to Arvada Police Department, et cetera. And we have SROs, and we had SROs, we had one SRO, and then we had campus supervisors. When I left, we had two campus supervisors, and when I went back to a memorial service at this school of two thousand kids, they had the SRO and eight campus supervisors carrying tasers. And so, again, I I think that probably in Pueblo, we have to look outside and and see what's going on in other places that are equivalent in terms of of population base. And Lakewood would be an example, although it's bigger than Pueblo. It's the fifth largest or seventh largest city in the state. Anyway, Arvada, the same thing. Golden is is smaller than Pueblo. But again, I think that looking to see what they're doing in other places is it is is a good thing, and I agree with with Counselor Gomez. Thank you.
Counselor Flores.
I thought I'd interject my opinion. I I was on the school board for eight years, and we had SOR officers at that time, just in the high schools, and then we implemented in middle school. But when you stop to think about having fifteen SRO officers in our school district, you also have a captive audience of the citizens of this community because at that time, we had eighteen thousand students. So to me, it was really cost-effective to me to see that those police officers were handling almost twenty percent of the population in a very confined area where you could really be proactive and and also get to meet the, meet the students, meet the teachers, understand the environment, and also be very proactive. So I can't imagine a more effective use of fifteen SRO officers. It would be nice to be able to do that in any part of our neighborhood, to have a captive audience with fifteen officers that are handling that big of the population, because those kids are part of the population of our community. They they're like any other citizen in my view. So I I, you know, I have a completely different view on this, and I think if I was still on the school board, I still would want those certified police officers in our school district because I think it really makes a difference. I had a question regarding the the crime analyst and the accreditation manager positions. When we passed the 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 additional funds, what is that called? What was that, the ballot issue in which you were?
Two B, Public Safety Sales Taxes.
It did, it did allow for twenty-four more slots, but there there was no money built in there that would cover slots like these? Was it just strictly certified officers?
Yes, sir, it's just strictly sworn personnel.
Okay, so that's why this is, your request is outside that money too?
Yes, sir.
Okay. And then on the the salary savings, I understand, you know, going forward, you know, you're cer- you're certified or you're not certified, but you're, you you can, if we had the amount of officers that we need, we have those slots open. Obviously, they're not all filled, so that money that is saved due to the fact that we're not filling the position, that is that strictly for salaries or can that be utilized? Or are we running out of that money, I guess, every year that it's not enough to cover our expenses?
So there the, there's two different, and I may be being a little bit redundant, and I'm not trying to be, but there's two different piles of money that come in our budget, whether that's P S S T or whether that's the general fund budget. One is personnel and the other is operating expenses. Without mayor approval, we cannot transfer money from from personnel into the operating budget. Now, the mayor has given us permission to do that, to basically what I would say, balance our budget so that we can pay our utility bills, so we could pay the jail bills, so that we could pay these other things like professional services that Deputy Chief Garcia talked about. And it's also, this salary savings has also allowed us to purchase other equipment that we haven't been able to purchase in the past, like a Bearcat we purchased last year, which is an armored vehicle for our SWAT officers. We purchased, I was on the SWAT team for thirteen years. We we had to buy all of our own weapon systems for the SWAT, for the SWAT team. We recently got approval to use some of that salary savings so that our officers no longer have to use their money to buy weapons to do their job. So that's what, and that's where I want to be clear. In this budget, I'm not asking for those kinds of things. I'm not even asking for the, for those kinds of things that that we really ought to be able to consider in our operating budget. But what we're merely asking for is to be able to have a properly, I guess the only way I could say it is to have a properly funded operating budget at the beginning of the year. And so what's, what has happened over the last fourteen years is until until Mayor Graham came, every year we receive instructions from the finance department on how to fill out our budget. And every year, with the exception of the twenty twenty-five budget, the first paragraph of that instruction has directed all department heads not to not to increase their budget, basically not to change it at all, which is why you end up, when you look at our operating budget over the last fourteen years as a department, that's why you end up with twenty ten, I think it was one point seven million, and today we're at two point three. I mean, that is like, that doesn't even keep up with rate of inflation. And and so what we are, what we have been, you know, it's it's a question of which side of this I'm looking at, whether the glass is half-full or half-empty. Because it's half-empty because I have forty, forty-three vacancies right now. It's half-full because now I'm able to buy weapons for my SWAT team that we haven't been able to buy ever. There's not a time before this year that the SWAT team members haven't had to buy their own, their own guns, whether that's a sniper, a sniper system costs about eight thousand dollars. I've got eight thousand dollar rifle that I own because I was on the SWAT team. The AR-15 platforms that we use, you're looking at three thousand dollars apiece once you have an optic on it. And so I've got just me, eleven thousand dollars that I spend on my own money to be on the SWAT team, and that's not even counting the uniforms and stuff that I had to buy. My first level-three ballistic vest, I paid for myself, that was fifteen hundred dollars. Thankfully, now, the department buys those. We buy the ballistic helmets, we now are, have bought the firearms that so they can do their job without needing to expend their money. So even while I'm beating that horse to death, I'm I'm not asking for that kind of money to be added into my budget next year. I'm asking just simply, for example, you know, you saw the professional services. We aren't and haven't been appropriately funded for those expenditures that I know of since I've been here. And now we're just asking, this is the average of what we've spent over the last four years. This is what we would like to start the year off with. And what will happen is a couple things. Hopefully, thanks to the mayor's changes to civil service, right now, we have twenty-two officers in our training pipeline. Eleven of them will be on the street on their own by the end of October. We have five people we just hired today that will go to the PCC Academy and and well, they start the PCC Academy, I think, next Monday. Then we have already two, three people slated for the November Academy that we're going to run, and we're going to potentially have the, I I'm going to pick high numbers because I I like to be optimistic, somewhere in the neighborhood of ten to fifteen officers that will go into that November Academy. And so now we're starting to get into a position where I don't anticipate we're going to be fully staffed by the end of twenty-five, but we're going to be as close to fully staffed as we've been in four years. And so that salary savings isn't going to be as readily available. And depending on what it is we need or or would like to provide, maybe we could use that salary savings to purchase some of these other things that we need, like AR-15s for all of our patrol officers or, you know, whatever. But the 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 reality of it is, for the time that I, since I've had any knowledge of the budget, and admittedly, that isn't as much of my career as I wish it was, we we have never been appropriately funded in our operating budget, never. And and I I have to look back when we were more fully staffed at at how my predecessors did it. But it also explains why we're in a fourteen-year-old building that has carpet that looks like it's from the Korean War and and why we can't replace those things because we don't have the money in our budget to do that, so.
Hi, President.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you for the report. That's, that was very informative. I just, on a lighter note, if every budget you ever got, they, prior to Mayor Graham, and it says, just don't raise your budget, you must have been the only one that listened because it went up fifty-three million in the last, in the last five years. So you did a good job, so maybe you are do that. That's, I'm trying to be funny, you're not laughing, I'm laughing. You gave an interesting take on the Greeley Police Department on one of your slides, where you showed they had an eleven million dollar operating budget and their their total budget was thirty-nine million. Wow, there's a big disconnect there, isn't there? Because ours is forty-three million, theirs is thirty-nine million, but yet their operating budget is eleven million and yours is three million. I wonder where the, did you, did you dive into their financial statements and 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 see where that difference is?
The difference is the number of officers that they're authorized is significantly lower. And the, I believe, obviously, I think their their city budget is much larger. I think their city budget is about four hundred million dollars. So you look at about a about a eighty, seventy-five, eighty officer difference at just base salary, that's in a little about a hundred thousand dollars a year. That's where some of that is. I don't know whether their benefits are as robust as ours are. We have some pretty good benefits and what their other ancillary things are. I do know that their pay is somewhat higher than ours. But again, when you have fewer officers, it doesn't impact the budget the same way.
I just thought it was interesting that there, that it was flopped around like that. You know, over the past, the big question from the very first time the two B got voted on and was brought before the voters, it was literally brought to the community and it was, it was advertised that we need to pass two B, and the reason that we need to pass two B is because we're short of officers. And two B was going to be the answer of getting us these extra officers that, because it's been a problem for many years, and I think it was two thousand seventeen when we started, when we started that whole process. So the city, very cognizant, the community, very cognizant of the fact that they're frustrated because they're not getting their calls answered, or their perception is, is the crime is 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 running rampant and the city saying that we just can't get officers. The community stepped up and they said, fantastic, let's tax ourselves, let's let's give the police department more money, and we'll get more officers to be passed again. And for the same reasons, we want more officers on the street, we want to feel safe in our community. We want when we call the police department, that the policeman comes and investigates my my trespass and and the world is good. But reality set in, and over those seven years or eight years or nine years, however far you want to go back, we've never come close to having as many officers as we need on the streets to make it happen. So I always prayed for the day that the police department would come in front of city council because I've always been a proponent of saying, and even when I campaigned for this position, to whoever would listen, public safety and the police department and the protection of our community is the most important thing there is, especially as an elected official. That's our primary duty is to ensure that the community is safe and well protected. So I'm okay with, do you need ten million dollars more? Do you need eight million dollars? Do you need $8 million more? What's the plan? Tell me what's not been told over the last 10 years. If you give us this, city council, if you make this happen, here's what's going to happen over the next 10 months or the next year. We're going to be fully staffed, we're going to start answering robbery calls, we're going to start sending officers out to people's houses. We're going to make something happen. I don't know how you make it happen. I'm not a expert on, on how to hire people. I'm not an expert on, on how to be a policeman. I'm a car salesman. But I am an expert in wanting to be able to help, and I think everybody on city council just sits here like our hands are tied that we're not getting the, the information that we need and the, the the vision of how this can get fixed. When you look at the public safety tax, we spend $3 million of it per your slide on 24 officers. We didn't gain 24 officers. We just took and put that money towards 24 officers that we had. So we didn't gain any officers. Then we use another 2 million or a million aid or whatever on cars and stuff like that because you have to. You're not, you're not. By your own admission, we haven't done a good job of giving you enough money for your operating expenses where you can buy that. So I understand why that happens. But I wonder if the community understands that because their perception, again, is that we vote this in and we expect that, that it's going to get better. And quite frankly, you know, we, we can argue till the cows come home. It's not better than it was in 2017. And we don't have a plan. Maybe you do. It just hasn't been shared with me of, of how we're going to get out of this mess. And I would hope that you would say to us, I need another $5 million. It's going to go to this, it's going to go to that. And again, like I said earlier, in one year, this is going to be the results of that money that you allocate to our department to make a difference. And unfortunately, I mean, we never get that. I think you're short selling yourself here in, in that I need $1 million for this, $300,000 for that. The CSO program is such, such a success. Why do we only want two more? Why don't we get 15 more? To free up more officers? Why don't we get 20 more to free up some officers? I think the perception is because guys like me sit up here all the time and go, you know what? We need, we spend way too much money. We, we, it's a horrible budget. We're out of control and we're going to go bankrupt here if we don't quit spending money. But quite literally, I would spend 50, 60, 70 million dollars a year personally. If I thought that it would fix what's wrong in our community when it comes to public safety and to crime. And we would find it somewhere else. I mean, something else is going to have to hurt, but the number one priority is the safety of our community. So we got to quit talking about, I need 300,000 for a couple, an analyst. I need, I need two CSOs. And I hope that, I just hope that I'm telling you that what you need to come back with for me personally is, hey, this is the real story here. We need 20 new CSOs. We need this equipment. We need that. And if you guys do, but there has to be a payback. The payback has to be that you're fully staffed, the community is, is relatively safe, and our calls are getting answered. That's, that's all I'm saying.
Was there a, do what, what was the question, sir? I'm sorry.
Go back and figure out whether you can use 50 more CSOs or something else. Again, I'm just saying, I'm just making an, an observation more than a question.
Okay.
Of, of, I just, if you get it, you get it. If you don't, you don't.
Well, here, here's a couple of things I would just like to say in response, if you'll allow me, is, is number one, the hiring issue with police departments is not unique to Pueblo. It is, it is throughout the state and throughout the country. And so there's a couple of things we do need. Number one, we may need to go back and decide whether we need to ask you for eight more CSOs or, or two. But some things we need from council is support at the legislature with the laws that are passed that take away qualified immunity from our officers, which makes it harder in the state of Colorado to hire police officers. The other issue we face in, in the southern part of the state is unlike agencies in the Denver metro area, our hiring pool is much smaller. So what we have done is we have a officer that travels not only throughout Colorado, but in various places throughout the country, trying to draw recruits here to work for us in the city of Pueblo. Another issue that it isn't commonly understood is if we lose 11 officers this year, let's just say, 10 officers to make it easy math. It is 48 weeks from the date that each one of those officers leave before their replacement will be fully trained if we hired them the day after they left. So we have right now an authorized strength of 231 officers. Currently, I have 188 people on the books. 22 of those don't really count because they're in a training mode where they're either riding with another officer in the academy or in some other form of training in, in that area. I also have 12 other officers that are out on injury leave or light duty that can't work the streets. So we're down to a practical strength of 156 officers. I just showed you the call load that the Greeley Police Department handles with 158 officers. We're handling twice that with 156. So that's why there is some feeling in the community that crime isn't going down. However, the numbers from 2023 were 10% reduction in, in crime overall, part one crime. So what is part one crime? Part one crime includes aggravated assault, arson, homicide, burglary, robbery, motor vehicle theft, and theft, larceny. Those numbers of this year are down 7% over the numbers last year. One of the other areas where we need help is, I agree that there's a general sense that crime isn't going down, even though it is based on the numbers. Part of the reason for that is because of the number of people that are wandering our streets like zombies, either high on drugs or, or completely mentally incapacitated. And we have nowhere to take these people. So we could use help from our council to go to the legislature and fight to get those monies brought down here to our community and others so that we could take these mentally ill people and put them in a place where they can get help and get them off of our streets. That, I think, would help reduce the sense of whether there's lawlessness in the community or not. Is our crime higher than it was in 2019? Yes, sir, it is, even today with the reductions that I've talked about. The, the reality of it is a lot of things have happened in that time. The change in legislation is one. The change in the workforce and who wants to work after the COVID era. The, the change in the recruit applicant pool that we have. So far this year, we have hired 22 officers. Last year was the highest number of officers we've hired since 2019, and that number was 26. Of that 26, only, only 15 made it through the, the, all the way through to the PTO program. The year prior, we hired, can't even read, 19, only nine of those made it through the PTO program. So one of the issues that we face is the ability for us to quickly hire. And that is because of the processes we have in place here in the city of Pueblo. So we could use some more help in that regard. The mayor has done a phenomenal job, in my opinion, of changing some of those ordinances or some of those requirements under an emergency situation. But I just tried to hire a community, community engagement manager, and it took me four months to get that civilian hired. It's, it's things like this that hamstring us, that make it difficult to bring people on. We had, we had.
Why is that?
Part of it is our civil service process.
What part of the process is?
The length of time. So if you take a, so you apply to work here. You, the, the, the hiring window has to be open for a certain length of time. And that length can be varied somewhat. Then there is a test. You take a written test. We, right now, we're getting half of the people, if we're lucky, that apply to even show up for the test. And some of that is because they just do it to get continued benefits. Some of it is because maybe they were already in an earlier hiring process for another agency and get picked up. But after that test, you got 10 days to appeal questions on the test. Then we have to set up a interview panel. Then we have to do a background check, which again takes time. That is not in civil services realm. That's, that's in ours. But we hire a company out that does that. It takes anywhere from four to six weeks to get those background checks done. And that's where we get hurt. Other agencies who don't do as thorough a job, hire people. You read about them sometimes in the paper and they can bring people on quicker than we can. Then, you know, there's also the, the processes after that that happen, the polygraph, the psychological, where we lose a lot of people. A lot of our candidates are psychologically not fit for duty. And so.
What can we do about that?
I don't know that you can do anything about that.
You needed our help.
I, it would be nice if we could condense our time schedule in, in order to get more hiring done.
How do we do that?
It would, it would require changes in the civil service charter. And I don't, I don't have that.
We've been, we've been arguing about this for five years.
Right.
Five years, we've known that the civil service, the whole process has been a, is a horrible process. But yet five years later, we're still talking about it.
Right.
Somebody tell me how to fix it. Let's fix it. Let's start on it tomorrow.
Well, we, we, we do have some suggestions. We worked with the mayor to get a lot of those suggestions implemented through her emergency order, but there are still some that we couldn't do through that process because it would require changes to the city charter in order to make it happen.
Then it should be on the ballot. Why isn't it?
Sir, I, I don't, I, our only thing I can speak to is what has happened in the past. And we have not been allowed to address the civil service process until Mayor Graham took, took office. And, and in regard to that process and how we can change it, she has done an immense amount of changes. And in that time, just since she's become mayor, we've hired 22 officers. And we're four months and five months into her tenure. So those changes may have helped us in, in the short term. I'd be happy to put together a paper on what other changes we think we could use and present that to the mayor to bring forward to council. But, so, so those are some issues that we have. Agencies that are allowed, there are agencies that do year-round hiring. We, we can't do that the way that things are set up right now with that, with the city charter. That would require, again, a change that would have to go to the voters. Is, at least that's my understanding. I'm certainly not, not a lawyer. Some other things that we could use help with is the ability to, oh, now I lost my train of thought.
Do that all the time. Don't feel bad.
Yeah. Well, I was going to give you an example of even the lateral hiring process. We had a, we had a gentleman that, that hired, that applied with us through, he was a retired LAPD detective that wanted to come work for us. And in the time that we got that process going, again, a big, a big problem is the length of time in the background as well, not just the civil service stuff. Well, he ends up getting hired by Aurora Police Department because he was a CSO there. So they found out he was looking to come. They offered him a job and we can't compete with that. So again, you ask about what we are doing. What we are doing is trying to leverage our benefits and, and salary package the best that we can to, to a bunch of other areas of, of the country where actually our pay is significantly higher than what the officers are making. We send our recruiter out. Our recruiter's been to Texas, New Mexico, Wyoming, Kansas, California. And I'm probably missing one or two other states. And that is all paid for through a grant that we received from the state in order to do that. I, I'll be honest with you. If you want to come to my office, I'll show you the board that sits right in front of me and I look at it every day as far as where we're at, what we're doing and what we could be doing differently. And there's only so many ways you can cut a pie. And that's where we're at right now. The advantage we're going to have is starting in October, we'll have 11 more officers that are on their own on the street, which will impact significantly our ability to respond to calls for service in a patrol capacity. The, by March of next year, maybe early April, we'll have the five officers that are starting the academy out on their own. And then the November academy will be going. What we truly need is a change in, a change in the national and state sentiment towards police officers to make this an attractive career field. We also need a lot of other things related to how people, a change, a shift, I guess, in, in, in people wanting to work, just period. Not only in my industry, but across, across the board. And, you know, the, the unfortunate impact that we have in law enforcement is the consequences are severe when we're short-staffed. You know, I, if I could wave a wand and have 75 more people, I would have done it, I would have done it three years ago. We're working as hard as anybody else. I talk to chiefs daily about how they're approaching recruiting and retention. And we have implemented a lot of the things that they are doing, and some of the things that they're doing, we can't because they don't have a civil service or they don't have other, other requirements that we do. Some of them are allowed to hire non-citizens. We can't. But by charter, you have to be a US citizen to be a police officer in Pueblo. So there are some things that other agencies can do to bring people on board that we can't.
And Mayor, I know you're working on the budget for 2025. Do you have a, a estimated anticipated revenue for 2025 yet?
Not at this time. The department's just received their payroll projections. Last Friday, they have till August 15th to get those resubmitted back to the finance department. And then that is when, I've already done pre-meetings with all the departments and that's kind of what you see is their pre-asks. And depending on sales tax revenue, what we can fund. This budget was built on a 4.2% increase for your 2024 budget. As of May's numbers, we are at a point 01 increase. So, you know, farther down than what was anticipated, but we are working very hard to bring you a more balanced budget than you've seen in previous years. We're going line by line to make, see how, you know, spending is done. This one, I specifically asked them to come and present to you because I'm hopeful that by next year, we don't have any salary savings to transfer. And I didn't want it to be a surprise to any of you that that's the way the police budget has been balanced previously is transferring salary savings. So whether you agree to do the $1.2 million or not for their operating budget, they will have some salary savings next year, but hopefully not enough to cover that nut. What I can tell you is, you know, we've been looking through our capital improvement projects and processes over the last several years. And what I've been able to find is sometimes we see capital improvement projects that have been done through different departments where they're kind of just putting a little bit of money away every single year until they get their, you know, $2 million saved up for projects. We're looking at unobligating funds that those projects have been sitting in for years and years and nothing has been done and putting them towards projects that are more affordable now because if these projects were budgeted three or four years ago, it's obviously going to be more expensive. So we'll be bringing those projects to you. In capital improvement, we've looked at different departments that have employees that are funded positions but have not been occupied for the last several years. Really narrowing those down to see if these are positions that we can do away with because we haven't hired anybody for years, but we've continued to fund them. So we're looking at different ways to make cuts to bring a more accurate budget to you. And that is why I asked them to come to present tonight for the actual needs of what the police department needs to operate so that in 2026, it is not a surprise to any of you when we're, when we're fully staffed. But we're working hard and we're doing the best job that we can.
And Chief, in here, in, in your budget, do you have any of your spot shot or crime center costs in here? Or are you depending on grant?
No, I think right now where we are at, the grants cover the, the cost of the, other than the salaries for the technicians, which will be included in the salary portion. The, the sections of the real-time crime center that are active right now are paid for for the next five years.
Okay.
Is my understanding and speaking with Lori Pins.
Okay. And, you know, what I noticed, or what I, what I was told when I first came on council was that, and I don't have the opportunity to go back right now and look at that, but you know, we, that, we historically ran it. About 33% of our budget went to our police department. And I noticed that when we upped, renewed the, the sales tax monies that the mayor brought us a budget last year at about 26%. So basically, you know, he said, oh, hey, we need to, you know, we need to pass this. We don't want to defund the police. So the citizens passed it, but we kind of defunded the police on the back end if we're only giving them 26% when it should have been around 33%. Is where a healthy budget for the police department runs is at about 33%. And that, that was just based off of my math last year when I looked at this. And that, that was just based off of my math last year when I looked at this. And then, um, and this, this here, and I just, uh, you know, I just went off the 132 or 134 that we did last year. Um, and we're at 29%. So we're still, you know, that I, I've been taught to believe that 33% of the revenue should go to the police department in order to have a healthy operating police budget. And so, uh, maybe this is something that maybe we just maybe need to revisit, you know, so that we can get back to that because I think that, you know, we've been taking away from it. Because we've had the opportunity to use the funds from the, uh, sales tax because we didn't have the officers to fund all of these, you know, things that we have. I came to, when I first came to council, I, I knew that they were not going to have any more communications money. I had said that I brought it forward for, with the sheriff's department, that that was all going to go away. It'd been paid for, for so many years, but it was going to go away. What we were going to do and, um, you know, under the previous administration, they weren't that concerned about it. It seemed like, um, that, uh, you know, I got into a police cruiser, which was immaculate the other night. Um, but you know, it needed some paint. It needed some, you know, some cosmetic things and we spent what 1.8 million on Mustangs that we really can't use. You know, there's, there's some things there and I'm not, you know, this is just what we had to work with the past few years.
I reply to what you said so far. One thing, one thing I, I would ask that you guys, uh, uh, the council, excuse me, think about is it's, it, you tell a dog for 14 years that it can't do something. And then in one year you tell it that it can, and it's supposed to just ask for everything it ever thought it wouldn't want. And that's just not how we are programmed. Our department, and you're right, uh, you mentioned it earlier, then we must be the only ones who didn't raise our budget. You, you, you're right. We didn't. Our operating budget anyway, our personnel costs went up every year. Um, but our department historically has never asked for anything above what it had the prior year. And anything we got in addition was just good luck. Um, you know, I think there is some truth, uh, Counselor Alif to the, to the question of why didn't we ask for eight CSOs? Uh, I thought I was.
I said 20.
Oh, well, okay. I, I don't know. I don't know. Sure. I could use 20, but maybe. Um, but the, the reality of it is when the mayor tells you for the first time, ask for what you need, you still lowball because you're so used to being told no all the time. I have come, I know my prior chiefs have come, going back to as far as I can remember, asking for more personnel, asking for more money and are told no at every turn by the, by the, either the city manager or the mayor. Um, the, when they, when they ask for certain things. Um, and it is hard to just come in and just say, I need 23 of these and 74 of those, when for 14 years you've been told no every time. Um, so I admit there may be some room for expansion on like the CSOs and some other areas. Um, I admit that there may be some things that we should be asking for that we have not thought of. But again, if, if you, if you spank the dog for 14 years for asking for something and then you tell it in one day that it can, it's going to be afraid to ask for everything that it needs, even with the right leadership in place. Um, I will tell you that, that Mayor, uh, Mayor Graham has been hugely supportive of what we need and what we, what we should be asking for. And, and I frankly feel bad that I've let her down by not asking for, for stuff that we need. And frankly, that I let my officers down by not asking for more stuff that, that I should have because I was afraid to be told no again. Um, so I, I'm not going to be ridiculous. And if I can prove that I only need four more CSOs, I'm going to ask for eight. But I think that, that there is some truth to the idea that we probably didn't look into this as well as we could have before presenting this budget to Mayor Graham.
Well, uh, you know, we, we appreciate you coming here and opening this up for discussion. You know, I think that, uh, what I was looking at and like what you were saying, uh, you and I had a discussion about Greeley prior to you presenting. And you know, Greeley's, uh, budget was 550 million. Their revenue is, well, their revenue is 550 million. Their revenue, ours isn't. So, but here it, but this is, it's our responsibility and the administration's responsibility to prioritize the needs of this city. And so we have to figure that out and we have to make those cuts somewhere else because, um, I still believe 33% is a good, healthy budget for you, uh, with the city our size. And obviously, um, it will give you some more money as far as towards your operating expenses. But you know, in, in reality, it's costing you about an extra $5 million of which you've been proposing for the last few years to actually just still get us by, right? Cause we've been taking that, that half some sales tax and getting things that we need that we didn't have. And, um, I'm all for getting together with this council and this administration and prioritizing the needs of the PD. And, um, and I also have a message to the citizens of this city. Stop abusing the 911 to go out and fix your little personal problems. I was so disappointed when I got in and we're 55, 45 calls behind and they're nonsense calls. Nonsense calls. Or they have some big family fight and they solve it and they don't call back in and say, oh, we solved it already. You know, it still stays in the queue. I mean, the citizens really need to take some responsibility. And the citizens also need to take some responsibility when it comes to the legislators and the legislation. They need to help us because they voted a lot of these people in that who were locally from Pueblo that made these policies that really turned this situation around. So not only do you need help from the council, because we're only seven votes, we need help from the citizens um, of this community. Um, and they just need to really start respecting the fact that we have 911 and that we should use it wisely. Cause I, I was, you know, keep your kids off of social media, take their phones away. Put everybody to bed at nine o'clock, put your children in bed at nine o'clock. We could just, I could, the list could go on. And you know, and like, you know, your officers are very accommodating, but the councilwoman, she could pretty much say that to those people when we're making some ridiculous calls. I didn't have a filter. You know, it's like, seriously, why are we doing this right now? But, um, any, anything else? Did you have another, anything else?
Okay. Adam Clark, I move that we go into executive session for a conference with the city attorney for the purpose of receiving legal advice on special legal questions under CRS section 24 dash 6 dash 402, parent four, parent B. And the following additional details are provided for identification purposes. Discussion with outside counsel regarding pending litigation relating to ordinance number 10698.
Second.
All in favor, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? Passes unanimously.
When you was too young, should I give this?
You know, it's close. You know. You know.
I'll just leave there, you know. Sharing too many recent points around. Cause they will be sharing questions. Good question. That's the way it needs to go. They, they outside now.
The time is nine seventeen on August, Monday, August fifth and we are adjourned.